And it is time to call the Canyon City July 20th meeting to order. I do want to point out that with the new mandate that Fremont County has, we are allowed to have 25 people in an indoor meeting with face masks. I do want to point out that the city council at this time on the podium, we are six feet social distanced. We are not wearing our masks right now because number one, this meeting is being broadcast. And number two, we also have hearing impaired in our audience. And that's one of the exceptions. If you have somebody that's hearing impaired, that that's an exception for wearing masks because they need to be able to read lips. And so between those two, that's why we're covered this way. I just wanted to make sure the public knows and recognizes that. And also for those who are in our audience today, we've invited some entities to represent the URA and ask when you come to the podium because it is being broadcast and we need to see your lips. If you could take your mask off at that time at the podium and then you're welcome to put it back on when you go back down in your seat. Again, thank you for being here. We will go ahead and start with our roll call. And we'll go to Denise, please.
Good evening. Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Hockes?
Here.
Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Brandon Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. We will now have the pledge allegiance. Please arise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Denise, do we have any requests from citizens to speak to council today?
I believe there was one, if not two.
I believe Emily Tracy, I know she was one. So can we, we'll go ahead and invite Emily Tracy to address us via Zoom.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm Emily Tracy. I'm here this evening with two of my hats on. First, I recently emailed mayor, council and staff about the Lincoln Park Cotter Superfund site, the former uranium mill site. And the community advisory group established under federal superfund law, the Community Advisory Group, or CAG, meets monthly with the site owner, Colorado Legacy Land, and with regulators of the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and the Federal Environmental Protection Agency. We are entering into a key phase of fully assessing the contamination at the site and in nearby neighborhoods, including Lincoln Park, and ultimately determining the best plan for site cleanup. We've had a representative on the CAG from the city in the past, and members of the CAG believe that it is essential that we have a city representative again as we move into this critical assessment and planning phase. Our next monthly meeting is tomorrow evening, 6:00 PM by Zoom. I emailed each of you the agenda this morning, which includes a link to the meeting. I hope some of you can attend, and of course, it's open to the public, too. Also, as you know, Canyon City's Energy Future has been communicating with city council members, the mayor, and city staff since early 2018 about the expired franchise with Black Hills Energy. Our requests have been take time to explore all options to bring down our electricity costs, include the community in your discussions about options, hold public work sessions, for example. If a franchise renewal with Black Hills is pursued due to the following. Number one, change the franchise language to make it only a five-year renewal. Number two, add language stating that the utility must continue to collect and remit the franchise fee to the city even after the franchise expires. And three, remove the proposed additional 1% undergrounding fee from the franchise. And so I ask if there's anything you can share with the public this evening regarding your executive session discussion about the franchise. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. And I would like to invite any council member that wishes to attend the Cotter meetings to feel free to do that. That's tomorrow night, you said 6:00 PM. Where at, Emily?
It's a Zoom meeting.
It's a Zoom meeting.
Yeah, there's no physical location yet, and the agencies are not able to actually do physical meetings for at least several months.
Okay. And Mayor Protem, would you like to address about the Black Hills franchise agreement?
I'm sorry, I was having a really hard time hearing, and so I caught about every fifth word or so. And I can certainly speak generally, and I'm not sure that I'm going to be on point, Emily, to the comments that you've made. And that's my fault, I guess. I'll plead bad ears, courtesy of the US Army. But in general, the important thing to keep in mind about the Black Hills franchise agreement is that there are things that we can do, things that are within our power, things that are not within our power. One of the things that is not within our power is setting a rate. That's the purview and authority of the Public Utilities Commission, and they're quite jealous of that authority. The other thing that we, although we could do, it would be tilting at windmills, you know, very small probability of success, a very large cost involved, is try to move to a different franchise provider, electricity provider. To do that, you have to have a finding from the Public Utilities Commission that your current electric provider has been derelict, almost to a criminal degree, in providing electric service to the franchise area. And so there's basically, we have a good franchise in front of us, I feel. We, our team worked real hard on getting the terms of the franchise. We have some very favorable terms, much more favorable terms than we previously got. One of the original asks of Canyon City's Energy Futures was for a 10-year term, and that's the term of this franchise agreement. It's not 25 years, it will be 10 years. And with all the brain damage that I went through in negotiating this thing, 10 years is about a good time to not have to do it again. So hopefully that was, hit some of the comments.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Protem Hamrick. Any other comments from city council?
I just want to reiterate what Mayor Protem Hamrick has, in that unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of things that are in control relative to the franchise agreement. And lowering rates, which I know everybody wants, or getting a new provider are things that are probably out of our control. And I realize many people don't like to hear that, but that's the reality of the situation.
And we'll be bringing this discussion to city council officially for a public meeting and have public comment on, and that will be in, is it August 3rd?
Yes, ma'am.
So August 3rd will be the day that we can accept public comment, and that'll also probably be a hybrid Zoom meeting and in-person meeting. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
So I just, I want to address some comments that I read on Facebook concerning the work that was put forth by city council to explore this franchise agreement. And I want to make it known very clear that a lot of time and effort away from other people's full-time jobs have been put into this franchise agreement, and that it was not a lackadaisical effort that was put into this agreement. There was a lot of time and energy that was put into this, and I just want to put that on record and get that out there to the people who might be reading comments without knowing what's factually happening.
Thank you. Councilman Hockes?
I agree with so far everything that's been said. I also want to make the comment during some of the hearings we had and some of the statements that were made, not only by you, Emily, and other peoples that thought we could look at someplace else, there was comments made that there's a lot of different entities out there that they have the money to do all this sort of thing, to take over and solve our problems. And I made the comment then, well, if they're out there, the door's open. Tell them to come here with their money, and we'll listen to them and see if what they've got can happen. Nobody opened, nobody knocked on the door, so apparently there was nobody out there that had this kind of momentum, this kind of money, that was willing to come to us and say, here we are. We'll support you. We'll do what we need to do so you can get away from Black Hills Energy. And we did everything possible to try to get this resolved, to satisfy. One of the things that's difficult with any kind of agreement is you're never, never going to have 100% satisfaction. Okay? So what you have to look at is what is the best result you can have for the people that we represent? Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
Mayor, is it all right if I respond to that?
You have 30 seconds left on your timer, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Given the nature of state statute and how investor-owned utilities are governed, the city would actually need to invite providers in. They can't just come knocking on your door, and we still encourage that that happens.
Thank you, Emily. We do have another citizen's request to speak to council, and that is Janet Lennox. Invite her to address council as well. You have three minutes on the timer.
I'm talking to you about a recent newspaper article in which the mayor, Ms. Smith, referred to the Veterans Park and homeless population there as residents. They are not residents of that park. They are not residents of our city. The article went on further to say that they're defecating in the bandstand area. I don't go to Centennial Park anymore because of the homeless population. Now that I know that they're urinating and defecating in Veterans Park, I likely won't be there. I am a veteran. The veterans dedicated that park in 1919. I would like to know what is being done about the homeless population and why they're being allowed to abuse our monies?
Thank you for coming and addressing city council. I'm happy to answer those questions and would invite Ryan Stevens maybe to answer some, and city council as well, if you have. As far as the homeless population at Veterans Park not being residents or citizens, they actually, by the Supreme Court, has made very solid statements through court proceedings that they are actually citizens and have constitutional rights. Whether we like what they're doing or not doing, they have rights to be at that park during the park hours, as long as they are not doing anything illegal or impeding the park maintenance or doing any harm to anybody, including themselves. With that in mind, we have had code enforcement coming and addressing some issues at the parks and have been doing some fines, some trespassing, and also just some work on intervention to try and get them to the help that they need. They say they call it their home, but we recognize that that park belongs to every single citizen in Canyon City and that it needs to be safe and a welcoming place for every single citizen in Canyon City. We're doing our best to move forward with that. Loews &amp; Fishes is looking at some porta-potties with COVID-19 money that we could possibly use. And we're also working through the Homeless Coalition and Loews &amp; Fishes and Built for Zero to try and help them want to get the help that they need to have a productive and independent life. Is there anything you would like to add to that?
No, I just, I would reiterate that we do have a no camping ordinance within the parks. We also have an ordinance regarding use of the bandshell, and those are now being enforced. And, you know, we've had recent discussions with the police department to make sure they're being enforced.
Yeah, thank you. I did notice that the bandshell had been cleaned up, and I appreciate that. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
You mentioned porta-potties with COVID money. For what?
We're exploring if Loews &amp; Fishes has some COVID money to, they have a responsibility to try and help suppress the COVID from passing among the homeless population, and so they might be able to use some funding to provide some porta-potties that maybe through a rental.
And place them where?
That's what we're trying to work that out. Places where, they already have one behind DHS, they have them at Loews &amp; Fishes themselves, but they don't have anything on this side of town for some of that homeless population to maybe appropriately use.
They already use that.
Their hygiene, yeah. Use, probably use their bathroom facilities. So it's something we're trying to explore with them, to have maybe something a little bit more healthy to prevent the spread of COVID and hygiene. Councilmember Reed?
I just wanted to say thank you for speaking up and bringing this to council. The situation that's been going in the parks for some time is something that has been discussed over and over throughout the community, and we continue to see struggles in that area. This is definitely an area that we need to continue to have conversations on, and I believe that the best way we can have those conversations is to make sure that we have a lot of public input. So I would just continue to ask all of the public that have feelings about the things that are going on in the parks, also to help us come up with solutions and ideas. This is definitely something I have, an eight-year-old, and want to be able to go to the parks and to feel uncomfortable doing that. And so I do appreciate you bringing this to council's attention again. I'm hopeful that others that feel the same and have solutions will continue to do so as well. Thank you.
I will add that we did have a meeting with our corresponders in Loews &amp; Fishes and some of the Homeless Coalition, and they have asked the particular population at Veterans Park not to use Centennial Park, and they have been really respectful so far in doing that in recognition that Centennial Park is really where families are congregating and would want to be able to feel a little bit more comfortable doing that, and they've been really good about that so far. So that's some good news as well. Any other comments from city council on that? We are continuing to have those. Every single city across the entire nation has similar problems. Canyon City is not unique. It's a problem that's not going to be going away anytime soon, and appreciate everybody's help in making sure we address it the best way that we can, that's responsible for everyone involved. I would now like to open up to council member announcements. We do have a meeting on Wednesday.
We do?
Yep. And you'll be hosting that meeting?
Yes.
And we'll be recognizing, we'll be talking with our police department in light of a lot of the riots and the new Senate bill that has been passed recently, talking about how we're coming into conformity with that, and also how we already have, in most regards, been in conformity with those and really been proactive and kind of on the cutting edge, towards CCPD. Other than that, I think, anything else? It's a general government?
Vision, it is a vision.
All right. Any other, councilmember Reed?
I just had a comment. I just wanted to say it's really nice to see people out there tonight. It's been a long time, so I really appreciate all of you taking the time to be able to come in and to visit with us, especially for myself, I'm hearing impaired, so the Zoom meetings have definitely been a challenge. So I really appreciate all of you taking the time to come in person tonight and doing all the things that we need to do to be able to make that happen. I just wanted to tell you that I really appreciate it. So thank you for being here.
Absolutely. I'm going to move on to item number six. A, and that's a moment of silence in recognition of Chief Marty Stefanik's passing. I had an opportunity to sit down with Kathy Heron and former chief school today, and it was really wonderful to hear the legacy that he had in his 17 years here in Canyon City. He retired in 2003 for medical reasons, and he was responsible for the Justice Center Road as far as bringing all those resources to one spot and building the new CCPD building there. And it's wonderful to hear his legacy, but it was before my time, and we're going to have just a moment to recognize him. Before we do that, Mayor Protem Hamrick, would you like to say something?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to point out that I heard, I got to hear Marty Stefanik speak. It was through a recording that our former county commissioner, Ed Norton, had and played on the radio. And it was definitely worth listening to. You know, my estimation of the man that was Marty Stefanik went way up, and I hope that there's some way that we can get either a transcription or a copy of that recording and perhaps even put it on our website, because it was quite astounding to hear what he had to say at that time.
I heard that, that's a great idea, and I heard that it was actually really applicable to what we're going through today.
Absolutely.
And so he's still speaking to us now. We will take a moment of silence to recognize him at this time. Thank you, Canyon City, for that time that we've had to reflect on Chief Marty Stefanik and give our condolences to his family and their loss that they have recently experienced. We will now be moving on to item B, and that also has to do with our police department. In light of the recent movement of a lot of people calling to defund the police, and in consideration that Canyon City, for our first time in history, has had the highest ratio of diversity of minorities, including our first interim female chief and first African-American sergeant, and in light that we have some of the best of the best of our Canyon City officers here in our department and want to reach out to any officers that want to have a place, we're there, absolutely welcome with open arms to come to Canyon City. This is a great place to be and know that we are supporting our CCPD and our officers. We have a proclamation, and it's the Canyon City Police Department Appreciation for July 2020, and our council is felt so strongly about it, they want to help in participating and reading that proclamation. And so we're going to start with Dolly Gonzalez, and we'll read the first, the first whereas, and it'll go down through and the rest of the council to his version. So I'll turn the time over to you, Dolly.
So, whereas, where we rely on our law enforcement officers to keep our neighborhoods safe, enforce our laws, and respond in time of crisis with their commitment, bravery, and determination, and?
Whereas, every day, police officers put on a badge and go to work knowing that they may face extremely dangerous situations, including assault, injury, and death. And?
Whereas, law enforcement officers play an integral part in our society and the city of Canyon City. They are the guardians of our way of life. They are reliable, strong, fearless, and they deserve our support. And? Whereas, they are the thin blue line that protects the heroes who face extraordinary circumstances with valor, honor, and self-sacrifice. The peacemakers who are blessed, the ones with bravery to go where others won't, and the ones with the dedication to our community. And?
Whereas, we appreciate our police officers' work in the community and their forward thinking of utilizing the co-responder program, body cameras, and banning chokeholds prior to the required legislation.
Okay. I didn't hear the "and." And whereas, we appreciate, we treasure our relationship and friendship with our police department. We admire that they do and afford them our deepest respect and gratitude honoring their heroic services and individual contributions by standing together with the men and women of the City of Canyon City Police Department and therefore Ashley Smith, Mayor of Canyon City, Colorado, do hereby, will hereby call upon all citizens to observe July 2020 as Canyon City Police Department Appreciation Month 2020. And?
Further, all of city council and the mayor, Ashley Smith, call upon all citizens of the City of Canyon City to take time to show their support and appreciation to the men and women of the City of Canyon City Police Department and all law enforcement officers dated this 20th day of July 2020. So thank you to our CCPD, and thank you to city council for your support for them. And we'll now turn our time over to the consent agenda. Ryan Stevens?
Thank you. Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on July 6th and the general government meeting, which was a joint session with the Planning Commission on July 8th. 8B is to approve the life safety grant application for 507 Main Street. 8C, we're going to ask the council pull this from the agenda as the county health department is currently going a mitigation plan for the community. 8D, authorizes the city administrator's signature on the City of Canyon City Fremont County IGA for the Grandview Bridge design. 8E, awards bid 3020 for the 2A on Meadows Avenue to Avalanche Excavating in an amount not to, an amount of $257,371 with a 10% contingency of $25,737.10 for a grand total of $283,108.10. 8F is the monthly budget summary for April. 8G is the monthly budget for May. 8H ratifies the mayor's signature on the request for certified local government status. And 8I is to receive and file list of bills.
I would like, if you, if council doesn't mind, like to invite both Tim Payne and Lisa Stutz respectively to address council about the historical certified local government
Thank you, council. I'm the chairman of the Canyon City Historic Preservation Commission. It's a commission that you guys approved, I believe, in 2018. It's myself, Mike Madone, Cindy Norrell, Rochelle Ryder, Jim Nelson, Terry Haru, and Chris Jenkins have come together, and we're going to ask you to designate these for the CLG application, and Lisa Stutz, your own very own Lisa Stutz, will explain that a little bit to you. We don't want to take up a lot of time, but be that as it may, this is a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and city council. Certified local government status will allow owners of historic properties, whether they're listed on the national, state, or local registry, the means to apply for tax credits to help with maintaining and preserving and possibly rehabilitating their historic properties, whether they are commercial or residential. And this is something that would be a benefit and a tool for this community, and it's also for properties who are listed as a contributing to a historic district as well. Did any of you have any questions in regards to the status for, that we're seeking for this community?
Councilmember Meisner?
Thanks, Lisa. Attachment three, where you list a number of properties that are on different historical registries, I guess.
Yes. Yep. There's several that have already been listed on the national, state, and local. The Fremont County Heritage Commission has listed some as local historic properties, however, the county does not have a CLG status at this moment.
So is your intent, or the intent of the group, or the organization, or however you refer to it, is there intent to designate some of those properties that are on this, on these lists?
They're already listed. This will just allow them for receiving tax credits if they so choose and be eligible for a state. and be eligible for state historic fund grants.
So would you specifically list those properties?
Yeah, we could, yes.
You could, or will, or?
We, yeah, they have to apply.
So, Councilman Meisner, when we set up the Historic Preservation Commission, we set it up in a way where the property owner has to apply. It's not something that we, as the city, are going to force on anybody.
So how are we making these people aware that they can apply?
We can contact the property owners. Yep, some of them would probably already know that they are listed. There is a list, the History Colorado website, of all those properties that have been listed on a state or national registry. The local one is listed on the county's website.
But what we're doing is talking about certified local. Is that correct?
Yes, for the city of Canyon City. So any property that is listed or wants to be listed as a local could be eligible for these tax credits.
So I know in Florence, my husband owns commercial property there, and they already have their certified local government. And he received a letter from the city of Florence inviting him to participate in it if he wished to.
And the commission can do that.
Can?
But can do that, but we'd have to get status as a certified local government first.
So you have to submit the application and get the designation before we can start doing the outreach activities?
Okay, I thought we did that, but apparently we didn't.
Nope, not yet.
No, what you did previous was to set the table so that we could apply for this designation.
Okay.
Any other questions from council about the consent agenda?
The consent agenda or this topic?
Or this topic.
I don't have anything for this topic.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
I would just like to point out on the life safety grant application, this is for a property, the old Teak Restaurant. There were several problems with the property to bring it that needed to be corrected to bring it up, and many of them in the life safety realm. But the owner, Stan Bullis, is not requesting money for all of those projects. He has cut, he's pared it down to a small number, things that essentially that he was not aware of when he acquired the properties. A lot of the things it sounds like he was aware of, and I'd like to publicly commend him for that for, you know, keeping the request appropriate for what his need was.
I'd like to point out, too, that life and safety grant that the city council created previously was to make it more affordable for some of these old buildings that aren't conforming to the current code standards so that they could afford. And so instead of being an empty storefront, this is an opportunity for them to make the necessary changes for life and safety so they can open up those stores and operate and start generating sales tax money. And so that's just, basically, it's just an effort investment for future tax money to come in to have those storefronts open and available for, hopefully, I'm hoping, a steakhouse or something. That'd be awesome. But it's, it has been a lot of investment already in that building, and this is just one of those things that'll help it go to the next level. Mayor Protem Hamrick, did you have something else?
Yes, I did. And this is on, on the authorize the city administrator's signature for the IGA for the Grandview Bridge design. And so my question is, Mr. Administrator, is that we're authorizing work and the IGA is thirty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars, some seven hundred dollars and change. And is, do I understand that that is just for the engineering only?
That is for the design and engineering, correct?
Design, and that is our portion for our water main, is that correct?
That is correct.
And?
Just the water main.
Just the water main. And so, and that's where my question comes in because usually, you know, engineering costs are ten to twenty percent of a project. Does that mean that we're going to see, you know, three hundred thousand dollar water line replacement, six hundred thousand dollar water line replacement?
You know, that's a good question. I think, you know, we, well, actually, Bob Hartsman, I think we have on the line. Bob, do you have an estimate or a projection on what the overall cost of the line might be? Is he still on?
Can you hear me, Ryan?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Yeah, we initially got that, a little bit surprised by the amount of them. Adam Lancaster and I talked about it a little bit. And we're hoping that the actual cost for installation doesn't come in quite that high. The number was provided to us, obviously, by Fremont County. And I didn't think that it was way out of the realm, but I don't know if it's possible to go back and negotiate with them or not, to be honest with you. It's what their engineer turned in to them.
Do you have any response?
I would just point out that the, what the engineering cost is close to fifty dollars a linear foot for what we're going to be constructing. And I would really expect that to be almost an all-in, fifty dollars a linear foot. I don't know, Bob, is that for a twelve-inch, you know, four and eight and twelve-inch lines? Is that in the ballpark there? I mean, that's a construction cost, is it not?
Strictly for engineering or for installation?
For installation. Isn't fifty dollars a linear foot close to purchase price for the materials?
I believe we've been seeing a little, quite a little bit more than that, like from our 2A work with Watermain. I think Adam's on the line as well, but I know that we're well above, somewhere north of the hundred and fifty dollars a linear foot range, I believe.
And this waterline work is, this is Adam Lancaster. The waterline work that we're talking about here on design is bridge structure design. They're not designing a waterline distribution system for us. We will do that ourselves. They're designing the bridge structure to accommodate the waterline, the attachments and the knockouts and so forth through the structure. And twenty percent for design is more and more common now for twenty percent of the construction cost, especially since they're doing the underground engineering that's required by state law now. So that's an additional task that typically is not, that we haven't seen in, you know, five, 10 years ago. We wouldn't have seen that element in the design. So I think that the price is appropriate.
Thank you. And do we know the total engineering cost, by chance?
For the bridge itself? I don't know, but Commissioner Payne and the audience might know.
Payne would know.
Oh, you're on the spot. No bottom line yet, he says.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meisner?
My question is different, but it's maybe directed towards Adam. Adam, on the Meadows Avenue, is that whole project, surface-wise, is that going to be asphalt or concrete?
It's a concrete job. The ground is way too soft up there to do an asphalt patch or asphalt street.
Okay.
The good news is the bid came in way lower than our estimate.
Well, with all of these bids coming in so much lower, we need to really kick out a lot more street construction projects with the money that we have.
We've got a long list that's stacking up for final design to be bid out.
I'm glad to hear that. Council or Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Thank you. So, Ryan, this is probably for you, too. This is, I'm looking at our monthly budget summaries and on our general fund revenues. So I'm looking at the very first page, and it's, and I think it's true in both April and May. And what that's showing is that our sales tax is lagging behind what our budgetary projections are. And yet we've received other, you know, figures from you that says we're seeing better than expected every month. Is that the, is, what am I missing here?
So there's lagging data here. So April's collections are for May, or for March's revenues. So what you're seeing here is, even though it says April 30th, it's actually, on a cash basis, that's through March.
Through March. So we've got a, we've got a really a lagging indicator there. Okay, then I've got a further question. The under, you know, getting back towards the back third page from the water fund revenues and expenditures. And what I'm looking at is our metered water sales there, comparing that, that sum of money to the next page, the stormwater fund revenues and the stormwater utility fees. And I, and it seems to me there's a disconnect there between stormwater fees collected and metered water sales. That we've got, for instance, in April, we've got, we're showing twenty percent of our budgetary year when we should be at thirty-three percent. And yet the stormwater utility fees are at thirty-five percent when we should be at thirty-three percent. And so it seems to me there's a disconnect between those numbers, that the same bill that provides the stormwater fees provides our metered water sales. And so that's my question. That can be a, you don't necessarily have to answer it here and now. But if you would, take that under consideration and look into that and see what the explanation is for that.
Yeah, I will look into that. I'm assuming that some of that has to do with the fact that the budget did not take into account any rate increases because the rate increases came after the budget was approved. So you might be seeing some of that in there, but I'll get you a more definitive answer than that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from city council?
I think I do.
Councilman Meisner?
Cash disbursements. I noticed we bought marking paint from Core and Main. Who is that? And I don't care much who it is. My question is, what attempts did we do to acquire that paint locally?
Core and Main is one of our purveyors for the water department.
Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we buy marking paint from several of the local businesses. We use Mon Nelson, we use Fastenal, we use Ace Hardware, Home Depot, as well as Core and Main.
Well, my question is?
We try to spread it around to all the vendors in town.
Are they local, Bob?
No, but they, for example, this year, they have our water stock bid.
Well, I mean, when you're spreading funds around, I wouldn't consider a business outside of the city to be spreading that money around, just from my personal perspective.
Well, we do use other local vendors to purchase that same stuff from. Occasionally, they buy it from Core and Main, but all the other vendors are local.
That's still five hundred dollars that was spent outside the community that could have been spent inside the community.
Right, well, taken.
Yeah, we can take a look at the purchasing policy on that.
We're going to go to Councilwoman Gonzalez, and then we'll come back to Meisner.
I just happened to look down at this, and I, it's not very much, it's very minimal, but on the cash, on the card disbursements, from five twenty to six seventeen, it's showing a hundred dollars to an executive session meal. We weren't even meeting then.
Must have been.
Or is there a lag in that as well?
It would have been, I believe we had a meeting at the beginning of June, but I would have to go back and double-check the date.
An executive session?
Okay, all right, okay.
Councilman Meisner?
My second question goes back to Ryan, and it's the same concept. I see a hundred and eighty-two dollars, which is a minor miniscule amount of our budget, but we're spending that money with Arkansas Valley seed versus potentially one of the local businesses. And again, that's a hundred and eighty-two dollars that I think should have been spent at a local business versus a business down the way.
And I'd have to look at that. If I remember correctly, it was something that, there was a product there that we couldn't get locally.
Must be some really special grass.
Okay, if we don't have any more questions or comment from city council, I would like to invite a motion with the removal of item C, if we may at this time, for the approval of the agenda and consent agenda items. Mayor Protem Hamrick?
So, Madam Mayor, members of council, I move that we accept the consent agenda with the removal of item 8C and that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And I'll call for a vote. Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes? Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
The motion is passed. Thank you. We'll now move to the administrators' report, and that's with Ryan Stevens, please.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. Just some updates here. You know, we did open the splash pad. We saw six hundred reservations done in the first forty-eight hours. We've since changed some of those rules to allow same-day bookings and seeing, you know, a lot of happy faces out there with the splash pad. We have not hit the thirty-five person max. It seems every slot, there's somebody that either doesn't cancel or somebody no-shows. So we're still kind of, you know, hovering right there around thirty-three, thirty-four. So, but overall, I think it's been well-received to be open and haven't had any issues as far as the process or procedure that we're taking on there. Our new bulk water station is in service and seems to be working well. We've received some responses from some of our commercial haulers. Very thankful for having that second station, for us turning up the power and pressure on the commercial water line. They're filling their tanks in about half the time. So good quality of life as well as efficiency improvement that we've made there. On an engineering standpoint, I signed the paperwork today. All of our signed projects are done. It's been over a year, or almost a year, since the first one started, the construction process, and felt good to sign off on that. The Eighth and Bridge Streets construction is underway. However, we might be expecting some delays there. We heard, we received contact from the contract, one of the subcontractors. They may have a COVID exposure, so they're slowing things down and getting testing and things like that. So they're going to have to go through that to make sure that we're good to go there. What else do we have here? Ninth Streets, we are continuing to work on Ninth Street there. We're tying up some loose ends on the water and stormwater side. Atmos is done in the streets. CenturyLink Telecom, they're working on relocating some facilities there at Main Street and Ninth. That could be, you know, if all goes well, it would take a week. If they run into some complications, it could be about a month before we get back into that part of the street. From College to Mystic, that portion of the project is scheduled to be done by around August 1st. Right now, that is still on schedule. The remaining balance of the project is scheduled to be done by September 30th. And we're, you know, again, some of that is going to hinge on CenturyLink relocating some of those facilities, but otherwise, we are on schedule, on pace for that project. There's been a lot of work that had to be done, you know, relocating all the utilities in the streets and getting everything where it needs to be, but... in the streets and getting everything where it needs to be, but, you know, and that's why it's taken so long, because we have lots of different entities in the street, so. But, uh, right now, all indications are that that project is going to be on time. You know, part of the reason College to Mystic is gonna get done first is because we were planning for the school year, and we were planning around the construction project there at Washington, so, uh, you know, we told the contractor they had to be done before that project finished, so, uh, that, we wrote it into the contract that way. Uh, the museum and library are now open, uh, and, you know, those openings are going well. And, uh, you know, lastly, uh, you know, a couple of days ago, we received word that the YMCA fire is fully contained, and I want to express my appreciation to all the fire crews and everybody in Bureau of Land Management, everybody that worked on that project to help keep those fires contained and away from any structures. I think everybody did a great job, and, you know, chiefs here, and, um, you know, I, I think, uh, you know, the communication that came out of the incident command was amazing, and, uh, you know, it, it was, uh, it was great to see it contained as quickly as it was. Nobody wants to see a fire, but if there is, you wanna see the crews jump on it as quickly as they did. So, thank you. I'd take any questions from Council at this time.
Um, Councilmember Meisner.
Thanks, Ryan. First question. I personally appreciate all the effort you put in to keeping Council up to date by the hour sometimes in terms of what was going on, because we continually get asked questions. So, I appreciate having information straight from the source in terms of what was going on. Second relative to that, any of those briefings where you at, were any of the, the corrections community there that you're aware of?
Uh, you know, so the briefings that I was getting, um, you know, I, I was tuning in to streaming briefings or somebody from the Police Department, PIO from the Police Department was keeping me in, in the loop, or Incident Command at the Police Department was keeping me in the loop. So, um, I'm not aware whether or not anybody from DOC was there, but I could certainly ask.
Okay, uh, I don't know that it matters, but I was just interested in terms of whether all that work we've done helped. But, uh, third question is maybe directed more so at Adam, but this is personal opinion. It just seems to me like the sign on the east side of town looks like somebody just stuck it there. I mean, it looks, doesn't look like I envisioned it would look. I don't know if I'm the only one, and I don't know what we do about it, but Adam, what's your thought?
It was put in for the design.
Okay.
I wasn't, I wasn't, um, I wasn't the artist. I was just the builder.
I, I don't, I don't know that there's much that we can do at, about it at this point.
It's just, it's just weird, it's just-
Councilmember Gonzalez, looks like she has something to say about that.
So, um, I remember a conversation when we were voting on, on these signs, and it was the consensus that they match the environment. So, the rock that's placed around the bottom is hard to see because it matches our environment, but then the sign is very bright and brown and blue, and, um-
I don't know, I just, it was a personal opinion.
That, that's what we voted on.
Well, I don't disagree, that's what we voted on, but it just looks like somebody just like stuck it there, and it, the rocks look, the locks, the rocks really don't look much natural, I don't think.
Maybe it needs a little bit more landscaping, rock landscaping to make it-
The rock doesn't look the same as, as the other rock that's been done in town around the rest of the signs.
The gra, the grass is, I mean, it's been seriesated and stuff too. It'd take a while for the grass to reestablish.
Oh, okay. I'll wait for that. Thanks, Adam.
Do more cactus up.
Councilmember Hockes, please.
Jim, I agree with you with, with regards to the rocks. First time I saw them, I thought, okay, where are we going? But they're there, and we can't do nothing about it. Uh, and I kudos to, with Fire Department for all the help they did there. I don't actually have a question, but what I have is a request from you, Ryan, for at next Council meeting. With all the construction we got going on in town, it causes you to go up roads and side places you've never been probably before. And I'm bringing this up because I would like to have a report on our next City Council meeting as to, with regards to what kind of enforcement, if any, with either citations or contacts we've had from our code enforcement officers, because I see stuff out there that has been there for a long time and nothing's being done. And so, I'm saying, well, it's, it's not overnight, it's been there for quite a while in there, and so I would like to have a report from you on our next meeting with numbers from our code enforcement people as to how many, I'm not necessarily saying citations, but I wanna know if you've given citations, but at least contacts with regards to stuff, because there's forklifts on the road, there's trailers on the roads, and stuff like that.
So-
And then my other comment is this, some of our streets, because of the condition they're in, okay, we have, you know, we just gotta deal with it, but up through the cracks we have, we're getting some good green vegetation that's coming up. Is the city looking at something with regards to, this is our, our responsibility, is the city looking at something to do, 'cause some of them are getting pretty tall, and, and you can tell some of them have been there for a while because, uh, there's vehicles that are there, you can tell haven't been moved because the vegetation keeps getting taller and all, stuff like that, so, uh, are we trying to do something to mitigate some of those problems that are on our streets with regards to the growth of the, the weeds and the vegetation?
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, just to, uh, to clarify your request, are, are you looking for code enforcement numbers citywide or just along the construction area?
No, citywide.
Okay.
Because I said, you know, I'm going different down roads that I've never been before because of the construction, which we need the construction to get done with like that. But because of that, I'm seeing stuff that I probably wouldn't have seen before, because I don't go down some of those streets normally.
Absolutely. I'll get a report for you.
Um, before I go to Councilmember Meisner, I do wanna point out on some of the comments about the masonry work, that the one in the east that looks really odd, that has been in the conversation, that person was fired because they were not doing a very good job. I wanna point out that Madonna Masonry took over since then, and their work has been really good, and we wanna make sure that we recognize the excellent work that has been done by Madonna Masonry, by our local job. Um, Councilmember Meisner.
Uh, just to help Frank out, I think if you go down 10th around Clover, there's some cars that are camouflaged that are actually parked on the street.
Camouflaged with the jungle growth of the street cracks? We recognize that we have a lot of issues in Canyon City that we need to take care of.
Yeah, we, we can certainly take a look, uh, as far as the numbers go. As, as far as code enforcement being out there, uh, I, I've had several discussions with interim chief Wagner, and, uh, we, we have code enforcement out there quite a bit now, um, and I think we'll start seeing more of those, those numbers on the rise.
It'll be nice to have that accountability. Also, would note that if you see items like that for the general public, you can go to See, Clicks, Fix on the website, and you can report those on the website, and it'll show that it's been reported and when it has been fixed and addressed as well. So, that's a nice service that's provided. Are we ready to move on with our, our schedule? Okay, let's go ahead. I would like to open up a public hearing, and this is for Item 9A, Consideration and Adoption of Resolution 14, Series of 2020, entitled "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Amending a Plat Note on the Plat of Dawson Ranch, Phase 9 Subdivision." And I'd like to-
We'll turn this over to Patrick Mulready, the City Planner.
Okay, so Patrick Mulready, can you please address us?
Certainly. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Uh, I do have a PowerPoint I'd like to share with you, but before I begin, I wanna confirm that you all did receive a revised version of the resolution earlier today. Uh, the difference between the one that's in your packet and the one you got earlier today is it is removing Lot 19 of Dawson Ranch, uh, Phase 9, uh, from the agreement. Uh, I will address some of that in my comments, and I believe Catherine Sellers is here, she wants to address some of that as well. We also have the petitioners, Gary and Carol Weerton, uh, on with us this afternoon too. So, without further ado, let me begin, um, my PowerPoint presentation.
Well, Patrick, while you get that up and going, on the form that is, was put on my desk, it still says access to Lots 17 and 18. Is that-
It should say 17 and 18. It excluded Lot 19 from part of this.
Okay. All right, thank you, Patrick. Go ahead.
Certainly. So, this evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, we are here to consider the resolution which would amend the plat note on the Dawson Ranch, Phase 9 Final Plat. Dawson Ranch, Phase 9, is the southernmost filing within the Dawson Ranch Plan Development. The particular portion of Phase 9 that is the subject of the proposed resolution is another southern boundary of Phase 9. The intersection of Storm Ridge and Greenhorn Drive is the southernmost portion of fully constructed road right-of-way. However, a section of Greenhorn Drive proceeding south from this intersection was created on the plat but not formally built as a road to public standards. The requirements to construct this unfinished portion of Greenhorn Drive are the subject of a plat note on the Dawson Ranch Final, Fight, Phase 9 Final Plat. The plat note specifically restricts the city's ability to issue a building permit on any lot which would take access from the unfinished portion of Greenhorn Drive until the road was constructed to standard city design requirements for public roadways. The owner of Lots 17 and 18 has petitioned the city to get relief from this obligation as they view this as overly burdensome and staff concurs. The plat note is one which would, which Resolution 14 proposes to amend. What currently exists within this unbuilt section of road is a private driveway which currently provides access through Lot 65 and a single-family home south of Lot 65. The resolution before Council this evening, if approved, would modify the existing plat note from the Dawson Ranch, Phase 9 Final Plat to instead read, "Greenhorn Drive, south of the intersection with Storm Ridge, is an unimproved right-of-way, and the city, until specifically accepted by the city for maintenance and riding, shall not be responsible for construction and/or maintenance of this right-of-way. If the owners using this portion of Greenhorn Drive want to improve the right-of-way, they will be responsible for developing that right-of-way to city standards and the cost of such improvements. Owners of lots using the road will be responsible for maintenance through private agreement or arrangement amongst the owners. Failure to reach a private agreement or arrangement will not shift the burden of construction and/or maintenance to the city." The goal in adopting this plat note is to remove the obligation to build Greenhorn Drive so that the owner of Lots 17 and 18 can obtain a building permit. And it should be noted that the obligation to finish Greenhorn Drive is deferred. Thus, until Greenhorn Drive is needed to provide access to future lots, it can remain a private drive serving only Lots 17, 18, and 65. Now, this modified plat note specifies that the city is under no obligation to maintain the unbuilt portion of Greenhouse Drive, or Greenhorn Drive, until it is completed to a city standard design for public streets, which means that until the road is built to a city standard design, ongoing maintenance to this section of Greenhorn Drive will be the subject of a private agreement between the owners of Lots 17, 18, and 65, as they are the only ones who benefit from a private access drive to these lots. With that, Resolution 14, Series of 2020, modifies the existing Dawson Ranch, Phase 9 plat note such that the road building obligation is lifted from Lots 17, 18, and 65. This will enable the owners of Lots 17 and 18 to obtain a building permit for a new home. It puts the obligation to maintain the driveway within the unbuilt road onto the lot owners who are enjoying access from it. And completion of the road, there is therefore deferred, and the city will not accept the unbuilt portion of Greenhorn Drive for maintenance and ownership obligations until it is built to a full city standard for public streets. That therefore recommends that after conducting a public hearing on this request, Council will adopt Resolution 14, Series of 2020. Now, regarding Lot 19, which is this lot to the north right here, we did speak with the owners of that lot last week. They admitted to us that they do not, they bought the property as an investment property, they don't have any intention to build at the present time, and were they to build, they understood that because of the existing grade, they could in fact take access to this lot from the built portion of Greenhorn Drive. The only reason they would ever need a secondary access from this end of the lot is if there were a need for a detached garage of some sort. They don't believe that's going to happen, and they declined to sign a consent form to be a part of this, so our city attorney, out of an abundance of caution, decided if they're not going to sign a consent form, we need to remove them from the resolution. That, that explains why you got the revised resolution. That would conclude my presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions the Council may have, and as I said, Catherine Sellers is also with us online today, as are Gary and Carol Weerton.
Um, Councilmember Meisner.
Patrick, can you, can you back up a couple of slides where you show that undeveloped Greenhorn in the red, just so that I have a visual? There. So, assuming that with this were passed, Lots 17 and 18 could build, but would they not reasonably get access from Greenhorn Drive? Looks like maybe, what is that, a cul-de-sac there or something? Or they could not do that?
Well, the grade, and the off of built portion make an access at this location almost impossible.
What'd you say?
The, it, it's a grade issue, uh, up at the cul-de-sac, so there, there's two steep of grade in order to put a access point.
Off of-
Off, off of the cul-de-sac.
It's true. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
So, um, my question is, if this resolution is passed, whose responsibility is it then to bring the street up to city standards? All three lots?
Well, at, at this point in time, there, there is no request to bring it up to a city standard. It, it would maintain its status as a private drive with a access agreement between the property owners.
And they maintain the street themselves.
They maintain it themselves?
That is correct.
Okay, so there's no-
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Meisner.
Those lots are in fact in the city.
Yes.
And they, they have-
They are, yes.
They have city water?
Yes.
Yes, sure.
And they have fire service? I'm not opposed to this, but historically, when we've tried to do these things, they come back and bite us later on. Like, nobody can remember why we approved this, and now these poor people have to have access off of unmaintained road, so whatever kind of progress or process we make here, and I realize the, the verbiage in here says that we accept no responsibility, but historically, we haven't done well with these.
Yeah, and Councilman Meisner, I, I do wanna point out that this is less restrictive than what's currently in the plat note now. You know, right now, and, and that might be something that Attorney Sellers might wanna address.
Sure. So, you know, as Patrick laid out, we can't issue a building permit until they improve the road, and I agree with you, Councilmember Meisner, the plat note that was put on there in 2004-ish was a kick-it-down-the-road kind of plat note that has caused this issue. And so, we are, you know, staff worked diligently to find a solution so that the owners of Lots 17 and 18 could get that building permit, and this is the resolution of that, of that, or I guess the solution for that problem, so that they could, and that maintenance would be their concern. It's not a, it's not a city-maintained right-of-way at this time, and if in the future, if they wanna improve it, based upon their own desires, they will have to pay for it, for the improvement. So, the other option is for the city to improve the right-of-way now itself, and either absorb that cost or charge it back to the owners who access off of it.
Well, the, the only reasonable alternative there, and Adam can correct me, it would be to, an improvement district, right?
Right, which the new, the resolution would allow them to do that in the future if they wanted to. There's, there's a number of future- There's a number of future scenarios. You know, the, all the existing neighbors get together and form an improvement district. There's a development to the east that needs a connection there, and city council puts them on the hook to do some of the improvements. But in a nutshell, as Catherine said, this allows them to build now. The current, the current plat note says no unless they build a road. This allows them to build now without building the road, but doesn't burden the rest of the taxpayers.
And an improvement district isn't the only method for that to, for improvement to occur. As I mentioned, the city can come in and assess the costs of that improvement without an improvement district. So, there's several, like, mechanisms. The city has no plan or desire to improve that right now, and so there's no reason to hold up a building permit if this private access is sufficient for the owners of lots seventeen and eighteen.
But the city owns that green, that Greenhorn unimproved roadway, right? Or whatever that's called. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
My concern is the scenario in ten years is that these people purchase the property, build a home, and are now paying more property tax, and there's some obligation there for the city to come back in and do an improvement. I mean, those are the kind of pickles that we wind up getting ourselves in politically and emotionally, not necessarily legally.
I tried to draft a plat note that made it very clear that that was not the city's responsibility. Now, the city can take that on voluntarily in the future if it so desires, but it is not the city's responsibility under that plat.
Would the lot owners, Gary or Carol Weirton, like to address city council?
We're here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm understanding that that is our responsibility, and I've already started the maintenance on it, which will conclude crack sealing in the winter time because there was a problem with it.
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
Yes, I understand that our maintenance is required on that portion of Greenhorn Drive. We've already started the ditching portion of it to preventing type erosion on it, and also aware that we need to do some crack sealing in the road. So, we're aware of the maintenance of this. No one expects the city to do anything on it.
So, what Mr. Weirton said is they're already aware, and they've already been doing some maintenance work on that road for erosion and and future crack seal? So, they're already taking the responsibility for that?
We're understanding that we're, we are responsible for it.
Is the terminology "crack seal" appropriate there, Adam?
Yeah, if that's the maintenance that he's choosing to do on that driveway with his neighbor.
Well, I'd love to get you involved, Adam, with a chip seal up here the next time to get you with us paying for it, because that road needs to be chip sealed. Can't go do it this year because we're kind of behind the curve, but...
That's, oh, to do cooperation, cooperation. That's a great idea. City Councilmember Dennehy would like to say something, please?
I guess one of my concerns on this is with the, what?
I guess with one of my concerns is with the fire department, and that with that road, and the access is going to be on that, on the upper parts of their lot. You know, that's a big concern, one for their trucks and that, and if that road is poorly maintained, are they going to be able to get at it? And I just, I think that's something that needs to be looked at too for emergency vehicles, because no matter what, that's within the city, and that's, that's part of their job as well.
I'm concerned as well. Dave DeVicchio there?
He is. Would you like to address council? Chief DeVicchio?
Was that Gary on the phone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There are some, I've just pulled this up on my phone with the GIS layer. So, there is a hydrant in that cul-de-sac, just about where the yellow and red meet. So, one of the things, part of the process would be, when the Weirtons submit their building plans for the permit, that process, we will get a review of that, and we will look at some of the driveway access issues, distance from a fire hydrant. It looks like, I'm not sure what the scale is on that, what that distance will be to go around on the private road part. I know we use that as access currently for the water tower site, as well as Mr. Tezak's private property is up that driveway. So, there's some, some things that will come into play that we will look at in regards to that, and if there are any requirements, then the Weirtons will, would be notified of that on our side of things for what the fire district requires.
Thank you. We're glad you're here for many reasons today, Chief DeVicchio. Are there any questions from city council? Any other questions? I know that the property owner is really eager to finally be able to have this passed so they can move forward with their home-building plans. They've, they've been waiting a long time. With that, oh, Councilmember Smith?
Just so we're clear, Patrick, this, this is so they can get a building permit, correct?
That is the goal. We would like to be able to tell the Weirtons tomorrow morning, your building permit is ready to be issued.
I would like to close the public hearing and ask for a motion in a second.
Mayor, if I may interrupt you, I just want to make sure that there weren't any other members of the public that wanted to speak on this.
That's a good point. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this matter? It looks like we don't have any hands raised. If that is correct, then I will ask.
So, are you screaming?
Are we good? I think we're good. I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion in a second, please.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution fourteen, Series of twenty-twenty, entitled the Resolution of the City of Canyon City. Amending, hm? Was that, do I have to say on first reading? Is it, is it a first reading? On first reading?
It's just a resolution.
Oh, it's?
It's just a resolution, so it'll pass tonight.
Okay.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. I will now ask, is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Meisner?
Adam, do we have a similar piece of roadway in the city that falls under this scenario where we've got an unimproved, a completely unimproved roadway that belongs to the city that's going to have access to multiple residential lots?
Or?
Is there?
We have, we have a number of possibilities, none, none early that someone's trying to build on.
I mean, just for information, I want to do everything I can to help an individual This just doesn't taste good.
As far as your remark of this doesn't taste good, there's a lot of things that happened with the development of Dawson Ranch.
There's one of them, right there.
That is one of many that has happened, that has come to bite us later on, that a lot of procedures were not taken appropriately or to the full extent that it needed to do, and people today are paying a lot of frustration for that. Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just point out, Jim, that I don't believe that's a current photo of the situation. I believe there is a asphalt road that goes through there, and that's why chip seal is appropriate for a term. So, that's not a, that's not really an up-to-date photo, is my understanding.
That's Adam's fault. He probably got an old GPS.
Okay. We have had a motion in a second. If there's no more discussion, I would like to call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
The resolution has passed. Congratulations to the Weirtons, and thank you, Patrick and Catherine Sellers, for your work on this. I know it was, was really complicated. Yeah, thank you. We'll move on to item, to item number B, and that's the urban renewal, which is the reason why we have our audience here. Thank you for your patience. This is consideration and adoption of Resolution sixteen, Series of twenty-two, twenty, by title only. I will now open the public hearing and invite the acting, or the city administrator for the staff report.
Great. While I'm giving the staff report, I'm going to ask Ann Ricker, our consultant, our urban renewal consultant, to come up to the podium. Urban renewal is a project that we kicked off with some informational meetings almost a year ago. It was the end of August last year, and we've had several public meetings regarding this topic since then, including some joint planning sessions with the Planning Commission. A couple months ago, city council approved the creation of the Urban Renewal Authority. What you're going to hear tonight in the presentation that Ann has in front of you is going to be the urban renewal plan, and with that, at this point, I'm going to turn that over to Ann to start that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Much of what I'm going to present tonight, you have already heard or seen at either the information meeting that we had for the stakeholders and the community at large back in, I think it was February, also, that was preceded by a council meeting, and then also, much of this was shared with the Planning Commission as required by statute, and I'll, I'll, when we get to that slide, I'll emphasize that. But this is generally what's, what we're going to present tonight. I did it in a very streamlined fashion because you had heard so much of this, but I'm happy to answer any questions in detail about any topic. What this milestone essentially schedule shows you is, as I said, there was an information meeting in February. We've highlighted that in the second column there. And then, there was also, as of June fifteenth, creation of the Urban Renewal Authority, and since then, it's been, your staff and that have been involved in not only coordinating with the different taxing entities regarding revenue sharing, but also the appointment of different members to the board. Also, again, as I mentioned, the Planning Commission meeting, and all of that basically has taken us through three major steps in this and brings us here tonight to the public hearing. Based on your consideration of the plan and the findings of blight, should you go forward, then you would go forth and implement, as we say. So, again, just to remind everybody, this is a two-part map because of the horizontal extent of the plan area, and then where it drops down along the, the western side. So, generally, just for people that are listening, the, the boundaries of the area, every effort was made to not include single-family detached homes, because that's really not, you know, a target market to make the resources of urban renewal available for. This is really a non-residential, non-single-family residential, more of a commercial and industrial tool. And as we said, that the area encompasses contiguous, commercial, central business district, and industrial-zoned properties located adjacent to and in the vicinity of US Highway fifty, as well as along arterial streets, including South Ninth and Eighth Streets and Justice Center Road. And then, the boundary also on the west follows South First Street to include commercial and industrial-zoned areas located along Mariposa, Valley, and Forge Roads, and also to the north, Seventh Street, to include the St. Scholastica site. And here is that southern extent map. So, some of the area characteristics, seven hundred and fifty-eight parcels, a little over thirteen hundred acres, and it does include adjacent and internal rights-of-way. Four hundred and thirty-three, oddly specific, or more parcels are less than half an acre in size. Five hundred and fifty-five properties have an improvement, meaning the balance are either vacant or largely unimproved in terms of, of value to any partial improvement that might be there. The majority of owners, this is always a good thing, are located in Canyon City. Eleven percent reside outside of Colorado. The uses, as I said, are primarily, you know, some are still identified by the assessor as agricultural, but they're, if they are, they're largely surrounded by commercial or industrial zoning. The residential that's there is largely multifamily, and then again, there's some exempt properties and vacant sites. Eighty-seven percent of the properties, as we say, are classified as either commercial or central business, and that's always a good test to make sure if that was your intent, that, that's kind of a good litmus test, that you probably struck the right boundaries. As we've said from the beginning, in the statute, in the Colorado Urban Renewal statute, they define blight, you know, the term that, that many people take exception to and don't like, and we always try and make a really big point of the fact that this is a legal term, it's a statutory term, it's not a qualitative term at all. But what the statute says is that in order to create an urban renewal area and, and designate it, you have to find at least four or five factors of blight. There's some conditions associated with the higher threshold. We always recommend to our clients, they hold themselves to the highest threshold of five, and the results of our survey found that ten of the eleven were present within the area, so you've more than met that threshold. The factor that wasn't, it's, and we wanted to be careful about saying this, that's, this isn't to say that this wasn't present in the area, factor G, which is defective or unusual conditions of title rendering the title non-marketable, and that can mean, you know, cloud on a title, but it can also mean easements, things that would limit the improvement, the ability to improve, the capacity to improve a, a private parcel as well. We just weren't able to find any documentation, or it wasn't provided to us. We never, I shouldn't say never, but rarely would we do the kind of title search work that would be associated with the, the former scenario where there's not a clear title. It's very expensive and exhaustive, and the only times we've done that is, A, if it's provided to us by a private sector property owner and/or public entity, or if you haven't more than cleared the threshold. In terms of the urban renewal plan, you know, as I, it was referenced on a previous slide, we, we often say that urban renewal is, is kind of a process of threes, and there's three pieces, three documents that really make up the urban renewal stool. The first one was the condition survey, I just provided those findings to you. The second is the urban renewal plan itself, which speaks to the intent of the plan, what, what is intended to be addressed, and that, the financing mechanisms that will be used. And then the third piece, and we'll kind of just give you an overview of that, is the impact reports that are prepared for the various taxing entities with a presence in the boundary area. So, this is that second leg of the stool. And within the urban renewal plan, what we've done is we've highlighted in blue the major elements of the plan. In the introduction, we talk about, again, the description of the plan, the blight findings. This is our way of kind of connecting the dots between the three legs. The plan intention, which is always, every plan, is eliminate and prevent the spread of blighting conditions, encourage needed urban, urban level rehabilitation, and to implement the community priorities as expressed in your community policy documents and that. Beyond that, that's where each urban renewal plan within a community takes on kind of the nuances and the unique things about what that plan will accomplish for you. But those are the most basic that every plan needs to address as per the statute. Then again, we talk about the blight findings, and in, with respect to not just another report of them like, that we present in the condition survey, but to say, because of this presence, these are the things that with private investment and reinvestment in their properties, these conditions, those conditions that were identified, will either be mitigated and/or eliminated. We talk about the references to key community plans that will be furthered by the urban renewal plan. We list those there. And then we talk about authorized undertaking- And then we talk about authorized undertakings and activities. And the major categories that appear in the plan are the completion of public improvements, acquiring and disposing of property. It's a power that is allowed under the plan, but there's nothing specifically identified to date for that. Entering into agreements, which you have already laid the groundwork for preceding this hearing because of the discussions that your staff and your attorney have had with the various taxing entities. You are allowed to adopt standards and guidelines, although you might remember that the language we included in the plan is that you would continue to leave that to the planning department, to the city and private interests that might bring forward design standards, development standards. It's allowed, but it says that you'll continue to leave those responsibilities with other city entities. And then finally, incur debt and issue bonds. And the definition of bond, I think it's important to say, as we define it in the plan, yes, of course, urban renewal authorities are permitted to issue urban renewal bonds, but the definition of bonds in the plan is really, basically, the authority can incur debt and extend resources to different meritorious projects and applicants and recipients. In terms of project financing, this is where we basically laid out the fact that this plan will allow for the collection of property tax increment within the area, as well as, as the final version has been, sales tax, the collection of city sales tax up to 1% of unconstrained, uncommitted city sales tax dollars on a project-by-project basis as they might prove need beyond what the property tax increment, how far that might help them in making a project feasible. And then finally, the last one is severability. The notable provisions within the plan that we really wanted to emphasize are, given the size of the area, some communities over the last, you know, 30, 40 years that they've been, you know, we've been working on these things, have opted to have multiple plans in, you know, given the size of this area and the extent of it. There was discussion at the beginning, but at the end of the day, the decision was made to have this be one plan area. It was also the area that was part of the survey area. So the survey area and plan area are basically the same. There, this plan does not allow for the use of eminent domain. Within the Urban Renewal Plan area, the intent is to have only one tax increment financing district, as opposed to multiple ones. It is written that the increment would begin to be collected as of adoption of the plan by council, should you decide to do that. That the collection of property and, as I said, city sales tax will be eligible. And then finally, that incremental revenues will be shared with the partner taxing entities as negotiated. And I will tell you that the last slide in the presentation, and we're almost there, I am going to have your attorney, your Urban Renewal Attorney, Corey Hoffman, specifically speak to that. And that will address the status of all of those taxing entities. So I thought, we thought we'd leave off with that, assuming there might be some questions. This is what I referred to earlier. One of the steps in the statute for preparation of the plan and then getting it all to you here this evening is a presentation of the plan specifically, not the survey, but the plan for Planning Commission's consideration. Because one of the essential elements is that this plan further the intentions of other community plans, number one being the comprehensive plan, we go to them to just make sure we did that right, that it is consistent. And we requested, we made a presentation, we requested that they take a vote on that. And I'm sure that we've got that documentation for you, and it was basically a thumbs up. Here, we have summarized, and this is important. We did a projection, knowing that a tax increment area lasts, can last 25 years. It can be less than that, as long as all the obligations, the intentions of the plan have been met. But if we just take that 25 years and we assume the development program. Oop, oop, hang on. Oh, that went fast. Hang on. There we go. What we did here is, because we are real estate economists and community strategists, we have the ability to look at properties within a planning area and do basically a market analysis and say, what might we forecast the private sector might choose to do in the way of investment and reinvestment in properties on these private parcels, commercial, industrial, whatever. This is a market-supported program. I promise you it'll be different than this because it's completely up to the private sector should they choose to invest in this area, in their own properties. But this is a market-supported program, it could be less, it could be more. And what we did is, based on that program then, in the first column, what we've done is we forecasted, what would that represent in terms of incremental revenue over 25 years? Again, total aggregate and then average annual, just so you have some sense of magnitude. Of course, we've included city of Canyon City from a property tax standpoint in the middle here, as well as that 1% sales tax I mentioned. I always make a point of saying here too, that Fremont County does have a sales tax, but the Urban Renewal Statute precludes urban renewal authorities from capturing county sales tax. So that will flow through to them, you know, any new, any old, all of it will continue to flow through. So these are really kind of the order of magnitude numbers that we're talking about. And then again, the last slide, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Hoffman to give you the status of those agreements.
And before I go to the final slide, I want to put a finer point on something Ms. Ricker said. What she will be considering, tonight we're recommending ultimately, after the public hearing, that you continue adoption of the resolution. When we bring the resolution back for final approval, you will have as part of the package, a proposed agreement between the city and the urban renewal authority that relates to the sharing of the city property tax and sales tax. That agreement will pledge 1% no matter what. And an additional 1% will be available if needed for a particular project. It will not touch the 2A funds whatsoever, so that 1% will continue to be dedicated to roads. But I wanted to put a finer point, that 1% will be pledged no matter what. So that on Slide 11, the previous slide, where you see the $296,000 per year in municipal sales tax increment, that is from the 1% plus the city's property tax mill levy, which would generate the $44,000 based on the estimate for a total city estimated contribution on an annual basis of $340,000. So you add the property tax and the sales tax. The reason I wanted to emphasize that is because I know that some of our taxing entity partners have had conversations about what the city's collective quote-unquote "skin in the game" is. That is the city's anticipated quote-unquote "skin in the game", which is the sales tax increment of at least $296,000 annually based on the projections, because that is just the 1%, plus all of the property tax mills, which is the $44,000. So I wanted to make sure that council and our taxing entity partners understood that was the, what was contemplated. And then as to the status on the next slide of the various agreements, they are still under negotiation. We have a final agreement that has been approved by the Recreation District. We have what the agreement between the city and the urban renewal authority that I just described that is ready for your formal approval when we bring forward the resolution. And then we are still in the process of negotiating the remainder, although I would point out that with the school district, we believe we have an agreement in concept. We are just waiting on final kind of non-substantive language revisions. The concept is that we will never negatively impact their pure, per-pupil funding related to the school district. And if there is ever, based on future changes to the School Finance Act, future changes to how property tax is backfilled by the state, then the urban renewal authority would make sure the school district is whole. And then we are, as I said, continuing to negotiate with Fremont County and with the Fire Protection District, who I know are both here tonight, and hope that some of the discussion tonight will lead to us being able to bring back completed agreements. We are recommending that this matter ultimately be continued to the third Monday in August. At that point, frankly, if we don't have agreements, we have to recommend going to mediation because that is the date by which we need to have either the agreements in place or go to the next step. We are doing everything, frankly, in our power to avoid going through mediation and attempting to work with our taxing entity partners. And happy to answer any questions, and I know Ms. Ricker is as well.
Councilmember Meisner.
Can you go back to the boundary map? Yeah. So, I really can't read mine. Where is the boundaries? I mean, there's lots of pink lines and red lines and pink areas and purple areas, yellow.
The dark purple line. Purple, but dark purple, so. And they follow property lines. I mean, that looks like a big jump, but that's one parcel. So it comes down the right-of-way, goes along, picks up, the St. Scholastica site. So this is what we say parcels largely contiguous to. This was an add-on parcel after we had originally completed the survey, they requested to be included. So that's why it came up here.
Is that the Abbey? What's that big yellow area?
Yeah, that is the Abbey, the yellow area.
Oh, the yellow is, yeah, I thought you were talking about this. So again, we're just following the purple lines, and these are the contiguous parcels to these right-of-way.
And Councilwoman Meisner and council, the idea was to try and, you know, as Ms. Ricker said, you know, we're trying to focus on commercial and industrial development. That's what urban renewal was meant for. And that's really where that property boundary is really, or the urban renewal boundary is really focused, is along that, the large swaths of commercial and industrial property within the city.
Any other questions from council at this time? Councilmember Reed.
Corey, I just had a question for clarification for myself and for anybody else listening. When you talked about the 1% that the city would be contributing for the sales tax, we're talking out of the 3%, not out of 100%, correct?
Correct.
So when we're looking at that, it's not 1% of 100%, like this tiny little bit, but rather 1% of the 3% we get, with 1% of that being the 2A money that is dedicated for the roads and untouchable essentially. And then the other 1%, we're still willing to put in there, project-by-project, correct?
That is correct.
Just wanted to make sure I was understanding. Thank you.
Councilmember Meisner.
So are all of those areas adjacent to each other?
They're contiguous.
Continuous?
Contiguous.
Yeah, they're contiguous, there are a couple of places where we did use the right-of-way to create that contiguous nexus.
I would like to just make a couple of statements before I invite some more people to come up. And well, if we have more questions, we'll certainly bring you back up again. Thank you for your presentation.
I like to still, FEDC Director or President Rob Brown's analogy of the broken truck on the side of the road. I use that one a lot in this instance, where he's talked about how Canyon City's been a broken truck by the side of the road for a really long time, waving their hands, asking for help for development, for opportunities to get some quality new businesses into town. And we really, through all of Colorado's boom, Canyon City missed the mark. And one of those tools that we were really missing out on was the URA tool. And I did notice during the COVID-19 that other communities that had tools like the URA and other things, they were able to react much faster and efficiently and have resources to help recover from those effects. And we have been crippled by not having it. This is a tool that can help us. We're tired of waiting by the side of the road for someone to come save us, but it's time for us to get some elbow grease in and really work together to fix that truck and the things that are broken. And this is one of those tools. We recognize we have a lot of things we need to do in Canyon City, but this is a very powerful tool that can really help us get the quality development and economic growth that we need. People often say, don't we have tax incentives that we can do? And this is the tax incentive that we can do to help. And we've had a lot of, been in a lot of other committee meetings for our comprehensive planning and our civic canopy. Civic canopy was done by the schools on how to recruit and retain teachers. We found out that all industries are having a hard time recruiting and retaining really good quality employees. Our comprehensive plan consultants, we've talked with them about that as well. They said that the 300 communities that they've helped transform, the number one thing they do for economic development, even stronger than the TIF that we're talking about today, is creating a really good quality of life with the quality stores and retail that quality employees expect and want to have where they live. And so this is just one chance for us to be able to really start making that happen. We needed it before COVID, we need it even more now. We have a list of projects that are waiting. Some people are already drafting their agreements to take part in the URA so they can actually make some of our blighted areas that break Canyon City residents' hearts to see have gone into disrepair. And it's an opportunity to have that be turned into something that we can be proud of again and useful, and bringing in new life and revenues and jobs to Canyon City. With that, though, this is not a Canyon City thing. This has to be done collectively, and the people in this room are part of that team to build that investment for our future for Canyon City. And I really just want to recognize and thank those who are here today. We have the school district, the park and recreation district, the county, and the fire district who are here. And we can't do this alone, it has to be done together and collaborative. And we recognize that this is a community effort to invest in all of our industries that we oversee. And we appreciate you being at the table, we appreciate you being a part of the conversations, and we appreciate you being a part of the solutions too, as we work together and move forward. I would and want to make sure that you always get that recognition through this opportunity. I would also like to invite all of you, after Councilmember Reed would like to address us, and then I'd like to invite each of you to come and address City Council as well. We want to be able to hear from you and answer questions that you may have. So first, we'll go to Councilwoman Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I just wanted to echo the sentiments that the mayor had about this being a community project. I really feel passionately that this is not something that the city of Canyon City should be putting forth ourselves. It's something that we need to be able to come together and recognize the needs and listen to each other. I've gotten the opportunity to have very candid conversations with many of you in this room, and I look forward to having many, many more. But I think the key in this is that we continue to have those conversations and to have this community vision together. I've spent a lot of time with the Canyon City Fire Department, with Chief Del Vecchio and Lance, and many of the amazing guys that you have working at the stations there. And I just wanted to say that I learned a lot through this process. You challenged me to dig deeper into it than I originally had, and I appreciate that opportunity that you provided. Having done that and dug into it more, I do believe that in the long run, this is something that's good for the vision of Canyon City. My hope and desire is that we can come to a solution where we can agree on the needs and find ways to be able to meet them. As much as this is about money and URA, it's really about the direction and the future that our city is going, and our city and our county obviously comes into play with that as well. So I do want to say that after all of this is done, I would really appreciate being able to have a continued conversation with any of the stakeholders that would like to, particularly the fire department. All of the initiatives that you guys have worked so hard to pass were family affairs. I was proud to be able to support those, and I saw the wives of the firemen out there pounding the pavement just as hard as I saw Chief echoing what they were doing. I think it's really important that we sit down and we continue to have those conversations and hear the concerns that any stakeholders... and hear the concerns that any stakeholder has, the concerns that your families have, and then let's talk about the vision and the things that we want to see and see what we can do to work together to make those happen. I don't want this to feel like the city is coming across telling you, "This is what we're going to do." I really want it to be something where we see the vision together, and we can work alongside each other to be able to make it happen, so that it can be a place that our children and our grandchildren want to live in. Thank you.
And I'll go to Councilmember Meisner.
I just want to kind of reiterate what Mandy has said, that we're looking at the urban renewal today, but from my perspective, this has been a five-year project that the city has been trying, different alternatives, to get some kind of economic development program in place. And we've tried Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, Plan D, and throwing those things on the wall, this seems to have been the plan, or seems to be the plan, that's kind of sticking to the wall, that kind of makes sense. And I reach out to those organizations, or at least from an explanation standpoint, that now that we've got a plan that, from a city perspective, we believe will provide some economic development opportunities, and that seems to be sticking to the wall, we need help. And that's where the reaching out that Mandy's talking about is that we need to reach out, get your perspectives, your problems, and your suggestions in terms of how do you participate in this plan to make it work? But this plan has been in the making for five years, at least in terms of the concept of getting an economic development plan in place. And now, we feel like there's something there, and we need to get all the team players together, and that's where we're at. So, I would hope that nobody feels as though that they're being force-fed with the system or a process, but that's kind of where we've accumulated the whole process, is now we need to get together and hit the finish line.
Mayor Potem Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to second what Councilwoman Reed and Councilmember Meisner have said. And I've been a member ever since I came to this community in 2005 of the Fremont Economic Development Corporation. Unfortunately, economic development is a competitive undertaking. We're in competition with other municipalities, sometimes that have a lot more resources than we do, and if we want to compete, we have to have the tools to be able to provide the appropriate mechanisms for economic development to happen at an accelerated rate. That's the idea of this plan, is to make things happen faster. We can sit back and hope that things will get better in the future. This is a plan to help us achieve that future. Thank you.
I would enjoy and appreciate hearing from our districts, if you wouldn't mind, and if you wish. We'll start with Chief Del Vecchio. Thank you.
Mayor Smith, councilmembers, thanks for having us here tonight. Actually, Mayor Smith's analogy of a broken truck hit home directly, so I'm going to use that, if you don't mind me borrowing it. So, the city's had a broken truck with their economic development. Well, the fire district has had a broken truck for the last 20 years that we finally fixed after two recent mill levy elections to get us back on our feet. So, I will reiterate, I've spoken to most of the council members here, there's only a couple that I have not spoken directly to, but I will reiterate the fact that our biggest concern is the loss of any of that revenue, because it was planned out for what the needs of the district are, to go forward for the next, hopefully, 10 to 15 years without having to go for another mill levy election. So, the broken truck analogy, in my mind, goes like this. For the city to fix their broken truck, they either need to borrow parts from our newly fixed truck, or take our truck and give us a broken truck. So, if you take parts of that truck that we have, we'll end up with a broken truck again. That's our fear. So, going forward, you know, we've been in discussion, we have a counter offer on the table with the city, and there's a couple of key things that I'd just like to iterate to the council as a whole, with everyone in the same room. We did submit a letter to council back on, it was back in May, in regards to asking to be removed from the URA in its entirety as a taxing entity, or 100% shareback across the board, however you want to look at it. And we held off on that letter being formally presented to council for definitive action, because we met with the city on July 2nd, which was just prior to the July 6 meeting, and we've been back and forth now since then on negotiations. So, you know, I'm here as the fire chief of the fire district, and many times, I have to wear that hat contrary to personal beliefs, personal feelings, and really saying what I want to say sometimes. But as a representative of the district, that's what I'm here for, to represent the district board's view on this and what we would like to get out of it in the end. The letter that we had submitted is still an option that's on the table. We have not dismissed that letter. The other, you know, we had the counter offer in to the city. I just talked with Brenda Jackson, our attorney, prior to the meeting. Have not heard back specifically from the city on that. She did have some conversations back and forth, apparently. But that, the district board at our last meeting, pretty much decided that that was about what we would be willing and able to give to the city towards the project. So, that basically our best offer at this point. The other option is the letter that was submitted to the council to ask to be removed totally from the process. There's, I don't know how many people are on the call right now, but I can guarantee you that there's a majority of people on that call are firefighters with the district. So, we have two distinct issues going on. We have the legal side of things that the fire district itself is trying to work its way through, and then we have the firefighters in the district, the union members of the organization, who, if you talk to them, and I know some of the council members have, they are the ones that have fought tooth and nail for the middle, every mill levy election the district has had to get that money. And you can talk to some of these guys, and they might be on the list to speak to you tonight, so you'll hear directly from them. But when they go through a 20-year career of nothing but fixing the truck or trying to fix the truck, it becomes really disheartening for them to get to the point now that says, "That money that we had fought for so hard, especially this last mill election that we had, we might lose some of that." Yes, in 25 years, we might see the benefits of it, or even 15, 20 years, whatever it might be, with increases in revenue across the board, but that's a long time for a firefighter to wait to see something happen. The other key topic, and I'm not sure how the conversations have gone between Brenda Jackson and Mr. Hoffman, the attorney, but the sales tax issue. I know I spoke with Ryan last week on Friday, I think it was. And I know the city is contributing sales tax to put more skin in the game, and that was a serious concern that we had, especially in the beginning. But sales tax, for us as the fire district, does nothing. Increase in sales tax revenue does nothing but generate a higher need for service. If you're generating more sales tax because of more people in the community, more development in the community, more tourists and what have you, we see nothing from sales tax, strictly property tax. And that's where we're a little different than the other taxing entities that are here this evening as well. And most of the city council knows that in our conversations. But in our opinion, from the fire district's side, the sales tax conversation is irrelevant to us, because there's nothing on that side of the coin that's going to benefit us going down the road, other than seeing an increase in service needs. So, the proposal that we put forward, that was part of the reasoning that that was our best proposal to this point, best in, I won't say last offer, but it's the best offer that we could come up with on the district side of things, that we felt was a fair and equitable share in the URA. You have the Rec. District, who has an agreement, a tentative agreement in place, and if you look at their agreements, basically, they're contributing the same mills that the city is contributing. The school district's a total another entity. You know, I've had conversations with George Welsh before he went on his current leave status, but if a school gets backfilled, they have $0 that they lose in their tax revenue. They maintain full funding for the school district. Now, Mr. Hoffman expressed some of the possible alternatives to that, that there would be compensation or offsets for that if the state stops backfilling the schools. So, the other taxing entities are either right in line with what the mill levy is for the city, or they have no fear of losing any of the tax revenues as they go forward. And I'm not sure of some of the smaller taxing districts, I'm not familiar with their structures and what have you, so I can't speak to that. So, basically, I mean, those are the three main points that I would like to make, and I thank you for the broken truck analogy, because it fit right in.
You know what? It's a really good point, because as we talked in our negotiations, we don't want you to have a broken fire truck. And that we want to create an IGA, an agreement, that makes you not just whole, but better than whole, and that we have in that IGA agreement that you aren't going to be losing any money either, just like the school. And I think I better turn it over to Cory, because you can explain it a lot better and address some of those questions about that Chief brought up about the broken truck analogy, losing money, city's sales tax, and how the fire district, they receive nothing from those sales taxes.
Can I add one more comment?
Sure. Yeah, so he'll address it.
You know what? The biggest problem is the uncertainty involved with the URA. You know, the plan identifies what the anticipated growth is and all those different aspects. You know, it's a dot board spinning around, and you're trying to hit the red section of the dot board. We don't know what's going to happen. You know, we could go through this URA and don't see nearly any of the development that's been identified in the proposal, and so we don't see nearly any of the impact adversely on that. Or we could see five times the development happen and, you know, have more adverse impacts. Now, I know we did negotiate, well, we're talking about a five-year renewal term, which I think, especially given the first term, by the time development happens and what have you, it would be pretty close to a couple of projects probably coming to fruition and maybe finalizing. But, you know, there's just so many unknowns in the plan. And the way the fire district is situated and set up, and being solely property tax-driven, there's a lot of other factors that come into play that I haven't even talked about tonight, with property valuations, residential assessment rates, or if that goes away, what is going to be the factor that they use to assess commercial residential property going forward. There's always something that happens outside of what goes on here locally that directly impacts us as a special district, special taxing fire.
All right. Well, let's turn that time over to our attorney, Cory Hoffman. We are really lucky, actually, to have Cory Hoffman here, not just tonight, but he is our attorney for Canyon City and represent us, and he is one of the experts on the URA, in which I feel helps us to be able to make sure that we're as successful as we can be as possible in creating the URA and implementing it, because we have his expertise right in our direct hands. So, I would love if you could address some of those concerns of the fire district.
Thank you, Mayor. And frankly, a lot of them, I'm not going to be able to address, because I think the chief clearly has an opinion. The folks with the fire district have an opinion that only time will show whether, who's right. I am confident, for what it's worth, that this will raise everyone's revenues. But I think I said this to the chief, I would never say, "Trust me." I would say, "Trust, but verify." And I think, I don't want to negotiate in public with the fire district, because we're continuing to negotiate with them, and so I don't think that's appropriate. But to one of the points he said, the city has always directed that the 12 mills that are part of the recent voter-approved increases in the fire district mills are off the table. The city has never requested any shareback of those 12 mills, even though, under the urban renewal law, the city would be entitled to increment derived from all of those mills. So, the only discussion has been about sharing back the 17.67 mills that were in place prior to the recent voter approvals. The chief's absolutely right, that much of what will happen in the future is going to be driven by the rate of development. And that is precisely why the language that we've proposed to the district, in addition to whatever the number may be at the end of the day, does have the ability to go back in five years and see what the estimates look like, see what the revenue stream is. Again, from my experience, I am confident the fire district will be pleasantly surprised. But having said that, verify. And so, we hope we can continue to talk to the fire district. They've now seen what the contribution of the city is, both in sales tax and property tax, but again, there is a lot of unknown. He's absolutely right. But the hope is that this tool will increase their revenue stream as well as the city's.
When you say there's a lot of unknown, I do want to say, though, that for a lot of conversations, when people will say, "Can you, you know, look at this development that happened in such and such town," or "Look at all these amazing things that are happening here," almost always it's because it has a URA, that was a tool that was used to make that happen. And so, there are a lot of success stories that show, I mean, the unknowns are limited.
The connection between the condition survey that Ms. Ricker talked about and urban renewal is that those condition surveys identify barriers. They make it more expensive to develop. And so, when the analysis shows 10 of the 11 blight factors in Canyon City, that suggests that there are some impediments to development caused by those blight factors that create an inability for the market to develop, because it's too expensive. If a property is environmentally contaminated, for example, if roads are laid out in an incorrect manner, it may be disproportionately expensive for someone to develop. And so, what urban renewal attempts to do is bridge that gap, all the while retaining the revenue stream that goes to the various taxing entities as the base, plus the rate of growth over time as the base grows. But without those tools, and I think Canyon City's history shows, that at the time that the rest of Colorado was enjoying a surge in development, for whatever reason, those barriers that I think are indicated in the condition survey were impeding properties in Canyon from developing to their full potential.
Administrator Stevens.
Yeah, just to take, you know, that one step further. Being the former Economic Development Director, I can tell you that I've had discussions with developers, specifically grocery developers, and, you know, one of the factors, it's one of the first questions they ask, is whether or not you have an urban renewal area. First question they ask is, you know, first questions are typically about demographics and location, whether you're rural or a metro-type of area. When you're in a rural area, a rural setting, and you don't have an urban renewal authority, that puts you behind the eight ball. These developers are looking for, you know, when they look at rural communities, they're looking at ways to offset some of those development costs that Mr. Hoffman is speaking about.
Cory, can you please explain a little bit further for the public sake and those that are listening tonight? Fears that URA would take their funding away, that it would take away from our fire department or from their salaries, or from their ability to build a new fire station or a fire truck, and how we are searching and creating IGAs and agreements that protect them from those losses, from any losses whatsoever, is just an investment tool. those loss, from any losses whatsoever, is just an investment tool?
I could tell you how urban renewal works, and that is that pre-2016, pre the adoption by the state legislature of House Bill 1348, all of the increment generated from urban renewal went to the urban renewal authority. As of the adoption of House Bill 1348, the city is required to negotiate with the taxing entities to address impacts, and that's what we have been doing over the past couple months in trying to negotiate agreements. But even without shareback agreements, taxing entities always retain the base, which is the amount they were getting prior to urban renewal, based on the value of property pre- urban renewal plan adoption. And even with urban renewal, that amount increases at the rate of growth of whether it's the county or the city, depending on what the assessor does. But the base isn't frozen. So if property is worth $100 today, and all property in the area goes up 3% a year, let's say, at, when there is what's called the biennial reassessment, the base would go up, whatever that growth across the board is. What the urban renewal authority gets is the increased revenue generated by development because of urban renewal, development in the urban renewal area. And it is only that, those dollars, that we're talking about sharing back. The taxing entities always retain their base, and they always retain that base, plus the rate of growth over time.
I'm Councilmember Meisner.
I'm trying to understand and explain that concept with you and the chief. And I write that the current fire district would be at 19.67?
The, I don't know what their current imposed mill levy is. They have authority, I believe it's for 29.67, give or take.
29.67. Currently, we're at 18.45, less the abatements and what have you.
So 18.45, and we know that two of that was voter-approved?
The, 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 the discussion we have had is of the authorized mills, and that gets up to the 29.67.
Right.
That's how much has been authorized. The city is only talking, negotiating about 17.67 of those, that the remaining 12 recently approved, off the table. In other words, 100% goes back to the fire district. So it is only the 17.67 that we are negotiating about a percentage shareback.
I guess my point to try to explain and to try to understand is that the base that will potentially increase in every two years is retained, the, the two mills that was approved by voters is always retained, as well as the 1%, 1A?
2A.
2A.
2A taxes. Those are the three sacred items, if you want to call them three. But, but at least the two sacred items are the voter improve, voter-approved increases that happened with the city and with the fire department. Those are sacred, and are not being touched by, by any kind of urban renewal. And, and people need to understand that, that those two items are sacred.
And the 12 mill that we received in the 2018 election has been taken off the table through the discussions with the city, yes. So we're only negotiating right now anyways on the 17.67.
And that was at council's direction? That was the city's opening offer as to not touch that 12 in deference to the fire district?
And I think, and I said, this isn't the proper place to do negotiations. We will hold some future negotiations. But the most important thing we can say is, we want you to be whole, we need you to be whole, we depend on you for the health of our community to have you be operating at full functioning capacity, and we want to ensure that. That is in our best interest as much as yours. If you want to have a final comment, you can, Chief, but I would like to have some other entities.
Yeah, I'd like to just clarify for the council. Prior to the last mill levy election, our mill rate was 17.67. We got approved for up to 12-mill increase. We only took a .78-mill increase for 2019 and 2020. So that's where the 18.45 is what our current assessed mill rate is, and we've refunded, abated back the additional mills from the 12. So that's all part of our planning process going forward, because of staffing, station, apparatus needs, and anticipated growth in the community prior to the U R A of where those 12 mills are allotted for. So, and if we're talking to 12 mills as well, it'll be a whole nother story right now regards to negotiations. But I want the council to be clear as to where those, how those mills are being assessed right now. And the 12 mills that we did get, .78 is being used, the rest is in the bank, because we know we're going to need them. And the final note, the fire district is not opposed to development in the community. You know, me, as a resident and a, and a taxpayer here, I've been waiting for development to happen. I miss the choice of multiple restaurants and other venues and activities to do within the community. So, I mean, I, I hope we do develop and become a more vibrant community. And the fire district would like to see that happen as well. The question comes down to at what cost? So we can iron that one out, we'll see where it goes from there.
Well, we appreciate you being in the negotiation process. Sincerely, we thank you for that, and for all of the fire district. We're happy if there's more, you said you have a lot of folks online today. I have a feeling they have a lot of questions, and we will open up to public questions soon. But would also like to offer, Mandy, do you want to offer what we can do?
So again, I, I mentioned a little bit before, but I do think that because this is such a complicated concept to understand, and because of the conversations that I have had with so many people that I know and respect, yourself included, I just wanted to extend the invitation to you, as well as the entire department and their wives as well, heck, you can bring kids if you want to, to be able to meet with council, meet with Ryan, and us to be able to sit down and have some really candid conversations, sharing ideas, sharing concerns, asking questions. I know that not everybody will be comfortable sharing their questions today on here, but I just want to make sure that there is that opportunity. It does not have to be in such a formal setting where we can sit down. I think that there is, you know, many hands makes light work, right? And so maybe there's some other additional ideas that we can come up with. But also, you know, again, the boots on the ground for these mill levy elections that were happening is truly a lot of the department team. They've put a lot of effort in it, and I think that it is only fair that the voices of them and their spouses, who are first responder wives, which we have a huge amount of respect for, are able to air their concerns, and that if we can answer any questions, then that's great, and share ideas. So I would be more than happy to take the lead in being able to facilitate those conversations and sit down and continue to have those candid conversations, because I think they're important.
Thank you for that. And my door is always open. You can get me cellphone, district office phone, pretty much anytime. Thank you.
Thank you again, Chief. I'm Commissioner Payne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. There was a question earlier in the meeting, so I'll go off script just a little bit, about the design and engineering on the Grandview Bridge. I did get an answer on that. We're contributing $250,833. Some of that is grant money. So I did get an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
You're sharp.
Well, I got good employees. I'm the president of the fire district, but the chief took the fire district questions tonight. I'm also a board member of the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District, as well as, I got a part-time job with the county. One thing I want to address, that the chief also addressed, and is a big concern of the county, along with the fire district, was the sales tax question. It's a little concerning to me, it's going to be project by project. If there's not a project for two or three years, does that mean you're not putting any money in?
So, so the 1% increment will go to the urban renewal authority. It's that second 1% that will be project by project.
And, and Commissioner Payne, if I could, and I talked to Brenda Jackson about this as well, the nomenclature of the urban renewal law makes this confusing, but what Ryan said is absolutely right. The term "project" under the urban renewal law means the entire urban renewal area. So 1% will be dedicated, no matter what. When you say "project by project" basis, really what the urban renewal law calls that is an undertaking. And on an undertaking-by-undertaking basis, that additional 1% might be in play. But the 1% will be available immediately, is pledged to the urban renewal area.
Okay, so then what happens in five years, there's a new council, and the new council says, "We're putting our sales tax to our general fund." All bets are off then, at that point?
Well, I, I think the way that we have been talking about it in negotiations is if that happens, that opens up the agreements with the other taxing entities who relied on the promise that we're making now.
The old skin in the game.
Exactly.
Okay, and then, I, I'm not sure how this works on a yearly basis. Is, is, are these funds audited to see who puts everything in, and as elected officials, do we see that audit to see who put what in on a yearly basis?
You will see, the urban renewal, the, the dollars get paid directly by the assessor or the treasurer to the urban renewal authority. Yes, it is a separate governmental entity, it is audited as a component unit of the city, and we can track as best we can based on how it comes in. So part of it is working with the county assessor to make sure that there's good sharing of information to help both of us know how it's coming in. And the city will have the sales tax information, it owns that, and it will absolutely have the information to show how much municipal sales tax increment is generated and goes to the urban renewal authority.
Okay. You talked about a baseline on, for, for all the taxing entities. What happens on the properties that the city owns, like Constantino's, Skyline Steel? That's at zero right now. So what happens when that gets developed? We're still at zero on our baseline. We're not getting anything. And like the fire district, if there's a hotel or a restaurant goes on Skyline Steel property, they still have a life safety issue to deal with and no income coming in.
So remember that because the project area is the entire urban renewal area, there will still be increases throughout the urban renewal area. But you are correct, that for exempt property, it is a zero base. So it starts at a zero base, and the, if it's sold to a private entity, it is all increment. That is correct. That is how the assessor's reference library works.
Okay, that's not fun. And something that, that hasn't been brought up is, this all puts together, the urban renewal authority is the, is the council, plus a school district, special district and a county. How is it determined who, that money go, goes out? How, who determines that? Does the council determines that, and the other three are just watchdogs? Or how does that work?
The other three members are, it is an 11-person board, so everyone has an equal vote.
Okay, all right. And so it, it goes out to contractors or whoever applies? Is that how it works? I mean, let's, let's take Phil Lund, let's put him on the spot for, for, for up there at St. Scholastica. He'll no more than likely be one of the first ones. How does that work? I mean, does he apply, and he, "I want infrastructure for this project"? Does Adam Lancaster make that decision on, I mean, who, who actually physically does the work and who gets the money?
The urban renewal authority will make a decision on which projects get urban renewal financing. What will happen in practice is that there will be applications that have to show a gap. So you're not entitled ever to urban renewal financing. So the urban renewal authority, the eight members of council and the three other members, so the 11-person body, will approve agreements that contribute tax increment to projects based on the existence of a gap. The other thing that we've talked about is that urban renewal authorities are also authorized to construct public improvements. So what often happens is, as either part of a, a development, or independently, urban renewal authorities may say, "We believe the best way to make this area of the city better is to assist the city in building a public improvement that is necessary to help accessibility, could be helping storm drainage, could be helping access, could be helping a whole host of things that are impediments to development today."
Yeah, and infrastructure is something I could, I think most people could get along with, because I think that helps a bigger segment. And I think there's a trust issue that we don't want to see a half million dollars go to Vegas and somebody abandons their project.
And, and that's, that's, I think, why I've said, "Trust, but verify." I understand.
Okay, that's a few of the comments I had, Madam Mayor, and I won't take up any more of your time.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here, Commissioner Payne.
Thanks, Mr. Payne.
Kyle Horn, would you like to address us from the Parks and Recreation District?
All right, thank you very much. So the Recreation District Board of Directors had the meeting on Tuesday last week, and unanimously approved the agreement to enter into an urban renewal authority. Of course, it still has to be accepted by you as well. I, I believe it was negotiated fairly. There were multiple conversations, there were probably, I think, four different meetings, whether it's between the city or district staff, four or five different meetings, and there were lots of different negotiation numbers put around. We thought that they were fair and honest with us, which we appreciate. At the same time, our board took the position of, a phrase I like to use is, "We don't live in a bubble." We're in this community together. I think the fire district did a great job in explaining that as well. I completely agree with them. We all would like to see growth, we'd like to see things happen, and yes, there are maybe some hindrances as to businesses coming here and you need another tool in the, in the box. You know, you mentioned a broken-down truck earlier, that was fun. I understand the chief. I'd be willing to argue, the only difference is, we literally have broken down pieces of equipment that we are getting to the point that we can't use anymore. We're probably in a financial situation a lot different than others. We are not a, a highly-funded recreation district in the state of Colorado. We're just not. We are fortunate to have the money that we do, and we stretch our dollar very wisely, and do the best that we can with it to serve the people, not just in Canyon City, but in surrounding communities as well. We understand that there is, that we have to work together for growth, and that there could be a benefit for us. When that is, we don't know, but at the same time, we negotiated a deal where there was 100% of the residential coming back. Granted, I know that's a small percentage. 33% of the commercial business coming back to the Rec District. So with each commercial improvement, we can see some revenue coming back to us. And the agreement that we relook at it in 10 years to see what the impact of the Rec District has done, and, and how this could work down the road. The other thing is, if there is a future bond question, which the Recreation District has made no secret about, we are intending to do something in 2021, because our budget says we have to. The pool says we have to. And so, so we are looking at going that route. Now granted, if things are continuing like they are right now, I may have a different answer for you next year, but in a perfect world, that's the direction we're going to be going. And none of that tax question would be impacted by the TIF, so that would be off limits per the contract. Now, when we came to this decision, the job that the Board of Directors had for me was to go out and find as much information as I could from other recreation districts. So we sent out something to every special district in Recreation in Colorado saying, "Can you get feedback?" We spoke with four. One was in the Denver metro area, the other three were not. One was in the Denver metro area, the other three were not. With that being said, what we found out from all four was that they didn't feel that their services or their recreation district was negatively impacted by an urban renewal authority. It's not my job to look at what it does for the county, for the fire district, for the school district or water conservancy district. My job is to look at it strictly from recreation and that's what we did. And what we discovered was there are benefits to it. And the interesting thing is in all four cases, there really was no TIF coming back to those recreation districts. So this is a little unique scenario. But then again, those urban renewal authorities could have been in place well before that had to happen. Other than that, we couldn't find anybody that was against it. And to be fair, we looked. There may be somebody out there that is in recreation, but we didn't find them. And so I had to go on the facts that we had. At the end of the day, we felt that it was the best for the community. Our board was unanimous in that and all five board members spoke to wanting to see business thrive in the community and could there be something down the road that benefits everyone? We have to work together to improve things. Please keep in mind that our only source of revenue is not, we are not strictly dependent on property taxes. Is that our largest source of revenue? Yes. But we also have programs. If the pools are operating, we'd have that. However, I will tell you that would still finish in the red drastically. And we also get CTF funds from conservation trust funds. And of course, the more people that are in the community, the more share of conservation trust funds that you get. So there's a chance that we could see a benefit down the road in that aspect. How that looks, I don't know. But with Colorado growing as a whole, I don't know if there would be a gigantic offset there. Because let's face it, we're not growing like Douglas County is or El Paso County. So we have to keep that in mind. But our whole goal was to come up with the best deal that puts the rec district in a position to succeed and put the community in a position to succeed. And it is the belief of our board that we have done that. And whether or not this goes through, that's not for me to say. I can say that we have done our part and it's now in your hands as a city council and the other entities' hands. But that's where we're at. But we want to appreciate at least fair negotiations that we thought. And I thought that everybody had a willingness to listen. But it's, listening is also a two-way street. I felt that it was a two-way street in this instance.
Thank you, Kyle. We appreciate that feedback and the unanimous support of the board from the Parks and Recreation District.
Any questions from anybody else on the council?
Thank you for being here. Would the school district like to address the city council? Like to welcome Adam Hartman?
My comments will be a little bit more brief only because where we are in this process. You had mentioned earlier that Superintendent Welsh is not working during the month of July and that is correct. But I would like to say, just in kind of a general sense, we certainly recognize that if something is ultimately good for the community, that's good for kids and that's good for us. So we come at this with a similar mindset, Kyle, is that we don't live in a bubble. We recognize that economic growth is ultimately going to be good for our community. And we appreciate the community's support with our own building projects that we're currently experiencing. So thank you for all of that. As far as where I think the, what my read is on our board is that they do still have some questions that need to be answered just specifically around protecting our per pupil funding and what might happen in the event that the state were to rescind stabilization efforts. And I hope that all the council, as well as anyone in attendance, appreciates that right now in terms of school finance, this is a tenuous time for us. This year, so I'll speak just a little bit about our COVID-19 experience. It's only because of federal crisis management funds that came through the CARES Act as well as ESER that we were able to backfill what would have been otherwise a tremendous loss to the school district. The Joint Budget Committee has recommended a forecast that shows that in the 2021, I'm sorry, the 2122, so we already know how funding looks for the 2021, the upcoming school year. But the 2122, that it could be a revenue forecast that's about three times worse than what they had forecast for this time around. If there were not offset funds from the federal government in order to make that right with our flow-through from the state, that's problematic at the local level. I think that Superintendent Welsh did a good job for you, Ryan, in terms of outlining the way that we are funded through specific ownership tax as well as local funds. But the fact that our per pupil funding does come at the state level, that's the lion's share. So in the event that stabilization were to be changed, that there was a rescinding of that, that could potentially be problematic. So I would just say, Mr. Hoffman, that we certainly have an interest in making sure of assurances so that the bottom line didn't mean that we would have less to do just as much as we've always done. The board, meaning now the school board, is interested in continuing this conversation. They'll be looking at this on the 27th in work session. We have solicited the input of legal counsel for us. We're awaiting that. It would also be helpful, and I don't know, Ryan, if George had already done this, but to be connected perhaps with some other communities and school districts who have been part of the URA in terms of attestation and their, their experience with the process. So I think the language that you used around agreeing concept is probably fairly fitting. I'm just trying to take the read of the school board. But certainly there are some questions that need to be answered. And appreciate, appreciate also the input from the other tax entities of, of which we have been communicating with them to include fire department as well as the rec district. So you've seen a smattering of different opinions on that front.
And I, I did provide Superintendent Welsh with some other agreements from some other communities and I can forward those to you.
Thank you. And it might just be that I was out of that loop. George's absence has been interesting and it's been an interesting month to have the superintendent not at work, I might add, for the record. He will probably listen to this.
And Adam Hartman, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure I speak on behalf of all city council that we want to make sure 100% that your per pupil capita amount is whole and will be backfilled if needed. That, the purpose of the URA is not to hurt any entity, but to not just make you whole, but even hopefully better and more, have more opportunities.
And it was helpful to see the projections that were outlined earlier during the presentation. And, and yes, that ultimately will be very important to us just around assurances around that point. And perhaps even looking at what the rec district did, something regarding the timeline at which we'd be able to open that conversation again. 25 years is a long time, so I think I've mentioned everything that I had hoped to mention. I don't think anything further. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for being here and thank you for this long meeting that you've had to sit through.
I actually have another one this evening.
Oh, lucky you. Yeah, we're not done yet either, but we appreciate you making the commitment to being here today.
Can I ask this quick question for Cory?
Yeah, please come up for, yeah, for a quick question that we need to open up to public comment.
I'm Lance Tomar. I'm the, I'm a, I'm the secretary treasurer of the fire board. I was voted in quite a few years ago when they were struggling drastically. And we have built this district back in. One of the things that I just listened to Cory say about that made me think about it, what you said is that the city has the ability to use the URA for infrastructure improvements. That obviously helps the city a lot. That makes your, your bottom line look good if you can, if you can use that money to take care of projects that you would have normally had to pay for.
No, that's not projects that we have to pay for.
Well, if you're going to do infrastructure improvements to the city, that's something that you would have had to fund somehow.
Well, let me give you, and you can definitely fill in. But let's say the riverfront corridor. You know, we all want to see a restaurant on the riverfront corridor, to have deck seating, to enjoy a meal and watch the river. It's going to cost over 1.5, over 1.5 million dollars for a developer to put in water and sewer. And so that's the type of infrastructure that a private developer would have to put in. Or let's say Holiday Inn that's coming in in Canyon City already. CDOT is requiring that Holiday Inn put in some infrastructure on Highway 50. It has to be paid for. That is a gap. That's not something that city would normally pay for. That's something that developers have to pay for.
In general, well, you are, but you are one of the river developers since you own those properties. So what I'm saying is, does the, let me add this for the fire district. As a board member, we were struggling drastically to, to replace worn-out equipment. We've got millions of dollars of equipment that have to be replaced over the next years. Does the URA have the ability to help us fund our equipment? To replace equipment? I mean, it would be a great project for community, but I mean, that we are obviously struggling to do. The mill levy that we got is, is definitely aimed towards replacing those. And that was the main goal for that mill levy increase that we got voted into. So I listened to that capability of helping the developer take care of infrastructure. Well, we have infrastructure that we drastically need and staffing that we drastically need. So that's why I just wondered, when you brought that up, I thought, wait a minute, as a board member, could I use the URA to help fund some of our infrastructure?
The answer is potentially yes. You would need enough revenue in terms of TIF to be able to do that, which includes...
If the prep goes right, yeah.
The, the TIF from all the entities. But it has to be, it has to be connected to blight remediation. And so for example, let's say there was some sort of bigger project that required different equipment. It is a lot easier to make that nexus.
Perfect.
For something related to, to the fire district. But yes, it is absolutely now for an extra fireman, for example, probably not. But, but things that have a nexus to, to the development and to the blight remediation, the answer is yes.
Yeah, just because basically as a fire department, growth and especially commercial growth is a high call volume issue. And we already have a high call volume issue that we are trying to continue to fund with old equipment that we, you know, we have apparatus that needs to be replaced. We have continued training on new apparatus. So that, these expenses don't go away. They get more with development. So that's why we're, that's why we're drastically worried about this. We can't have a drop of funding and an increase in calls. That's going to destroy us.
We understand that and that's why we're working out an IGA that, that addresses those concerns. Absolutely, we are 100% aware of that and want to address that. Administrator Stevens?
Yeah, so Mr. Tomar, you know, a great example is actually something that was approved tonight, which was the life safety grant. We've been funding that out of general fund every year. For the past couple of years, we've, we've put about $50,000 out of general fund. You know, that, that's a type of infrastructure that's going to benefit the, the fire district. You know, we have all these old buildings downtown that have to come up to compliance with current codes. And, you know, in order to do that, that's a barrier to development. It, it's very hard to bring those buildings up to code, especially considering the, the life and safety of the public, but also the life and safety of our firefighters and our first responders. So, you know, having, you know, $50,000 a year coming from the general fund, you know, we'll tackle it eventually, you know, nickel and diming it. But we have the potential under an urban renewal authority to have a larger program to create more opportunities for bringing those buildings up to code and providing a safer environment for the community.
Well, I think that's, everybody would like to see that. Okay, but obviously as a taxing district, you have to watch your function.
We have Mayor Pro Cham Hamrick.
Administrator Stevens stole my thunder.
Before we open up to public comment, Ann Ricker, I want to put on your radar. I, I've had that question presented to me because I mentioned that other communities that are doing amazing things, they use their URAs and there's been a question asked, what are those cities and what are they doing? So after public comment, would you be able to briefly maybe highlight some of those? Things that have happened in our community? If you have a public comment that is on Zoom, if you could please raise your hand on Zoom and then we will give you, in the interest of time, because this public hearing is taking a long time and we have a lot of people on that list. It appears we will give a two-minute time limit. Because you can't see the timer on Zoom, I will give you a 30-second warning. Then you have 30 seconds left.
And Madam Mayor, if there are folks that are on Zoom via their cell phone or their personal home phone, they can press star nine to raise their hand.
Thank you for that. I do see that we already have Shane Roberts, who'd like to address city council. Shane, we will start with you and you have two minutes.
Madam Mayor, Members of council, first of all, I just want to thank you for this opportunity to talk to you this evening. And one of the things I want to say is, is that I'm not representing the fire district in any way. I'm just one of the guys that's worked there and I've been around since 1996 with the fire district. And I've seen a lot of changes. And so one of the things that most concerns me is the simple fact that we're not being asked if we want to be a participant in this. We're actually, you know, you came to us and, and said that it's not how we want to participate or if we want to, it's, it's, this is how much it's going to cost you. And then we're kind of fighting for our lives as far as trying to get some of that money back. And one of the things that I want to make sure that the council is fully aware of is it's not just the 5A that was in 2014 or 6B that was in 2018. I've been involved in multiple elections since 1996 and each one of those was done with one thing in mind. And that is to stabilize the fire district and actually plan for a future. And so the thing that I take issue with and the number of firefighters who are listening this evening is the simple fact that we're not being asked if we want to be participants in this. We're being told you will participate in this. And the problem with that is, is we went to a very specific vote of the community and asked for fire department funds for first responders and for emergency services. And my concern is, is I've talked to a lot of people and I've talked to some of your council members and people are in agreement that one of the reasons it's going this way is because this would not pass the witness test of going to a vote of the people. It would probably fail and probably fail big. So our concern is, is if, is this the last resort? And is, and the, how we feel, to be honest, is that we've met this point because this is the only option that doesn't force you to go to a vote of the people and ask for permission.
30 seconds?
Okay, thank you. And so that's the only thing that I want people to know. And I will certainly take Councilman Reed up on sitting down with some council members and Ryan Stevens, and I would love the opportunity to sit down and visit with you. And I just thank you for this opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, Shane. Just really quick, Ryan, can you just maybe share with the public how the invitation to participate started?
Yeah, we, we started looking at this, like I said at the very beginning of the public hearing in August of last year, we invited all the taxing entities to that. This was something that, as Councilman Meisner mentioned, has been in the works. And I think we've been talking about it for, for many more years other than, you know, what, what just happened in August. So, you know, I, I think, you know, we, you know, we, we've invited the taxing entities to, to the table to have these discussions and tried to have many open discussions about this before we, we got here. This is not something that just happened overnight.
And we are continuing that, Mandy Reed, council member Mandy Reed has extended that invitation once again to play, to play in the sandbox together for the future of Canyon City. I see that Scott Johnson has his hand raised. Scott, we will also give you your two minutes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to address council, even though it's virtual and I appreciate your time and the long effort that you guys are putting into. A few of the things that I would like to bring up is that we talk about urban renewal. We talk about the things that could be, could be, could be, could be.
Scott, we're failing to hear you. We're getting some feedback. So we're getting, we're pausing. Now we're pausing the timer to see if we got a technical difficulty. Let me give our IT a second here. We have a lot of feedback in the chambers. It is, everybody on Zoom muted except for Scott. All right. Are we ready to try again? Let's try again, Scott.
How was this? Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, good. Again, mayor, council and everybody there in attendance, thank you for taking the time tonight for this very important issue that I think is, is actually a very huge one for the city of Canyon City. I've been fortunate to live in Canyon City for 50 years. Many of you have lived here longer, many of you have not lived here this long. And I do remember Canyon City, 25 years ago, that vibrant was a destination, not only for food, but for recreation. It was a pass-through, people came, Blossom Festival was two days because it was such a big deal. That wasn't done through URA. That was done through people's community, their money. And it didn't take URA to do that. and it didn't take U R A to do that. So I just want to remind you that. The second thing is, I'd like to also remind council of, I am the Assistant Fire Chief. I've been blessed to work the fire district for 30 years, almost 30 years. I want the council to also remember what the fire district gives the city today at the cost of zero. The fire protection district, the entire Royal Board's front, the entire protection district.
Scott, we lost you again. We, we think we're picking up radio frequency on your part.
So we, the last we heard was your, the start of your second point.
Well, I don't know what to say.
Turn that radio off.
Turn that radio off.
So Scott, you have, you do have 30 seconds left to address council with your final statements.
Would anybody hear what I had to say to begin with?
Sure.
Yeah, you're on number two.
Okay. I guess the question is, is that the council needs to understand that the fire district is already highly engaged in city work and projects and everything, and it isn't costing them anything, and to take the money out of the hard-earned taxpayers' public safety money is just another dip in the bucket that we already give to you. And so that's what I applaud to you, and I hope that you understand where being a firefighter is. It's not a job, it's a calling, we do it for the people. And please understand that they don't do this lightly, they have never asked for taxpayers lightly, and to watch it get taken away, as Shane Roberts so eloquently told you, is very hard to stomach. That is not what we promise our taxpayers.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Your two minutes are up. Councilmember Meisner?
Just kind of giving Scott something to think about is that, I don't disagree with you that 20 years ago, there was some vibrancy to Canyon City, but I think part of the problem is, is that Canyon City has kind of stepped in place, while other communities, and some of those communities as a result of urban renewal, have moved forward, and that's caused a shift. And we just, in order to catch up or to get back in place, we need to try to do some different things, and the Urban Renewal Authority will give us an opportunity to help do that, because all of those things take money. And I think other people have moved ahead of us while we've stood still over the last 20 years.
I would take that further. We haven't just stayed still. St. Gloucester has fallen apart. It became a homeless encampment with weeds up to your head and tons of robbery and decrease in property values. Hotel St. Cloud also in disrepair. It just became a huge pigeon-dropping place on the sidewalk. It's a linchpin to successful downtown. The Abbey is now at risk of falling apart into disrepair as well, but it has so much potential and such an identity for Canyon City, we don't want to lose that. Our riverfront zone, that's, that's like beachfront property that has zero commercial value to our community. All of those are near and dear to Canyon City's hearts, and they are falling apart, and they are key to us moving forward, and the U R A is a tool that helps us to do that. And we are not here to take money away from anybody, we're here to create tools to make more investment and jobs and revenue for all districts and be upfront with that. Now with that, do we have any more hands raised?
Can I just say something?
Absolutely. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Sorry, I have to use the facilities, but I did, I did want to piggyback off of what you said, though, because... I lost my thought.
We can pause.
I'll be back.
While we wait for Dolly, do we have any more hands raised from the public? It doesn't appear to be, so I will invite Ann Ricker to come up and share two minutes as well, some success stories of U R A and how they've really helped turn around communities.
Thanks for knowing I could go on and on. I made a very quick list. Obviously, I wasn't asked ahead of time, so this is pretty authentic. I was trying to match up your issues with what other communities have been able to use the tool to address, so similar issues. So the ones that immediately came to mind, actually with the, the gal that was here before who was requesting pursuant the historic designation, I cannot tell you how many times I've been asked to speak about urban renewal at state historic preservation conferences. They embrace urban renewal. That funding mechanism, combined with the one that, that you're all looking at now, can be the difference in terms of keeping up a building or, you know, restoring it in its historic form, making it possible, financially possible, for the private sector property owner to do that, because it is wildly expensive and many communities really want that. So I just wanted to mention, there's often a misnomer that historic preservation doesn't like a renewal, and it can't be further from the truth. On the riverfront, the two that came to mind, obviously Pueblo, where they brought the river back into its original corridor, and then all the downtown development that's happened because of that, that was completely urban renewal. Also, the Estes Park flood of 1976, the Big Thompson flood, I don't know how many of you remember that, absolutely destroyed all the small businesses in downtown. Urban renewal, 100% covered the funding to create the Riverwalk and stabilize the downtown and business environment. Also, the other one was Lyons following the 2013 flood, also relied completely, the federal money was slow in coming in, and urban renewal made it possible to stabilize those small businesses. In terms of, and this, I was glad that Ryan brought up the life safety issue, huge issue. Small businesses in downtown Lamar, their Main Street program was really struggling because there was a disincentive for small businesses to expand, because many of them were in buildings that, once they wanted to put a patio on or something, it triggered bringing the building up to code, which is a good thing. However, they couldn't even put a patio on because of that, because of the cost of $75,000 to sprinkler the whole building. So urban renewal was able to take care of the life safety issues, they were able to get the loan to put in the patio area. Those are all downtown examples.
We had our two minutes. I wish you could go on and on, but we have to be fair and equitable to all comments. But thank you, that is a good start of a list. I do want to turn to Councilmember Gonzalez, and then to Corey Hoffman, our attorney.
So I, I think what I was thinking when I was listening to Ashley speak was, I don't, I don't think that any of us here are arguing the, the value of a U R A. That, that's not what we're here for. We're, we're trying to figure out if, you know, your shiny new red truck is going to stay shiny, red, and new. Are we going to help you take care of that truck? So to what value, I mean, when, when you really look, look at it, if you're not helping yourself, you can't help anybody else. So I think we need to, to look further into, is this worth it for other taxing entities? And if it is, then we can move forward. I don't want to, I don't want to see a taxing entity put in a position where they feel like they're forced to do something that they don't want to do. If there's, if there's a way that we can make it equitable and work for everybody involved, then I think that's important. But to, to put an entity and cause strife between two other, two entities is not worth it to me. So that's just, I, I think that's what I wanted to say when you were talking. I can't say it nearly as eloquently as I want to right now, but I'm, I'm feeling like, I don't think that anybody's here to argue the fact that a U R A is a good thing, but at what cost are we willing to look at that U R A?
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. And we'll turn to Corey Hoffman, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick examples that might be a little more Canyon City-specific, because we could talk about Belmar and Lakewood, there's no big mall here. You know, a lot of the examples are more kind of big city, but there's three examples I would, I would point out that are a little more, I think, Canyon City-appropriate. Old Town Arvada, completely redeveloped based on urban renewal, and I would frankly compare it to your downtown area in the before condition. And if you go to Old Town Arvada now and see what it is, it is, it is fundamentally different. Smaller scale, North Glen brought in a natural foods with urban renewal. That was one of the primary incentives for getting a natural grocer, vitamin, then Vitamin Cottage. Wheat Ridge used it for Wheat Ridge Cyclory, which was an iconic place where every cyclist knew that's where you got your best bike. Wasn't a big project, it was, as I recall, it was probably $150,000 of increment, but it allowed an iconic member of that community to rebuild, thrive, and frankly, then the success went down the corridor where Wheat Ridge Cyclory was. Those are, I think, more of the sort of small-scale success stories that then the community builds on in if urban renewal is successful.
Thank you. And we'll turn the time over to Councilmember Hockes.
One thing I want to say is this, Youngman, ultimately, it is City Council's decision when this comes to the final vote. But what I want people out there to understand is this, you, the voters, put us in these positions, and you put us here. And so we're here to listen to what you have to say. And if you don't say something to us, we don't have any idea of what you're looking at. Mandy expressed the fact that people have come to here, to her, with regards to having more open concession and talks about things, which is good. You heard the rec district say, why therefore, which was a positive for them. You heard the school district come and say their same thing. You heard the fire chief come up here, too. And I'll say one thing, I'm going to give kudos to the fire chief. If we would have done this prior to this time, and prior to this time that we got your letter, we would have been at ground zero. And the fire chief has made, even, even if you want to consider it a small baby step forward, he's made a step forward to reach out with regards to the negotiations that have been going on. So that's a plus. So understand this, folks, you have to let us know your concerns, so we, it helps us decide what we're going to do, okay? Ultimately, there will be positives, and there will be negatives. That's just the way the world works, you know? There's never a 100% positive or 100% negative. So keep that in mind. We've got time before this comes to its final conclusion. So now's your time to get out there and continue to talk to us. I hope that the conversations with fire chief continue to go in a sense the way they're going, which is a positive way. We hope that now some of the questions that the county has now can be resolved, everything. So it's a stepping process where it takes time, and we've been working at this for a long time. So it's not over yet. Understand that. We're listening to everybody, and I wish every one of those folks that were on the list to talk would have had the opportunity to talk. But it just tells us that there are people out there that are concerned, okay? So don't let your concerns go unnoticed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This has been a lengthy public hearing. Are we ready to close the public hearing? Are there any other final comments from City Council? Then I will close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask for a motion to continue the consideration of the resolution to August 17th. Councilmember Meisner?
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that we postpone Resolution 16...
Continue it.
Continue Resolution 16, Series of 2020, to the August 17th City Council meeting. Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Then I'll call the rule.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
And was that Mayor Pro-Tam Hamrick?
Aye.
That was you that did the second? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Brandon Smith?
Aye.
All right, the motion is carried. We'll see you all again till August 17th. Hope that we can have our negotiations sealed by then, and we appreciate you for your time and commitment, just, not just tonight, but to our community every single day. Thank you so much for all that you do. I, I do think we need to have at least a five-minute break for City Council really quick to get maybe a drink of water and such. And then we'll return. We'll make it quick, and then we'll come back and continue the rest of our meeting for tonight. I'd like to call the City Council meeting back to order. We still have a lot to discuss. And we're going to move on to item number 10, A, the Consideration and Adoption by Title Only, Resolution 15, Series of 2020. This is a resolution for the Canyon City to approve the Public Highway AT Grade Crossing Improvement Agreement. I will turn this time over to...
Actually, we'll turn it over to Adam Lancaster, since he has sat through this whole meeting, we may as well let him speak a little bit more.
Thanks, Adam.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. This resolution is the approval of the agreement for the AT grade crossing on 11th Street, actually two crossings on 11th Street. There are, there are three total crossings on 11th Street. The northernmost one is the Union Pacific Main Line, and then there are two siding crossings that go into the Royal Board's tourist train maintenance facility. We had an agreement, well, let me say that we, we entered into these agreements every time there's a, a crossing improvement to delineate who pays for what and who maintains what. And typically, the PUC rules at this point in time, once those crossings are established, the maintenance is shared 50, 50/50 with the railroad and whoever the crossing agency is, in this case, the city. So we had entered into an agreement with the Royal Board Railroad back in 2016. They lost their lease for the property, moved out. We entered into another agreement with the Rock and Roll Railroad, who was the new tenant. They've since have moved out, and now the Royal Board Railroad has a long-term lease with the property owner, who is Bill Tezak, for the maintenance facility. So back in 2016, that agreement was actually for the two crossings that are there, plus a new one they wanted to add. Since then, they do not want to add the third crossing, they just want to make the two that are there legitimate and are interested in maintaining those for their, maintenance of their cars and engines there in those facilities. And so since these were, these were never established, originally, we were not registered with the PUC, and there was not a formal agreement with the city for these crossings, we are starting out our baseline that they are responsible for the first time that these crossings get replaced. They are on the hook 100% when that happens, and then from that point on, we'll follow the, the PUC rules, whatever they are at that time. But they are in fairly good condition now, so we don't want them to replace them now, but the agreement makes it very clear that, that they are to maintain those and/or replace those when time at their cost. So that's what we'd like to do. Your permission? We'll get this agreement signed and recorded and, and submit it to the PUC for, for filing on the railroad.
Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Meisner?
Adam, Jim, off-subject, I guess, but, so let's look at the 9th Street crossing, and it gets in the shape that's in, and how long does it take it to get fixed? Relating that back to the 11th Street situation.
Sure. So depending, it depends on the railroad and what agreements are in place at the time. That's one of the benefits of having this agreement in hand. We're in the unique scenario where railroad's coming to us first for a crossing. Typically, it's the other way around, and so we're, we're in the position with this agreement that we can force that issue within, I think the agreement lays it out for six months. They have six months from the time we tell them to replace it, to do so. Where for the main line that you're talking about, the one that we just did on 11th Street, and for the one that's at 9th Street, that's a Union Pacific. And so they were there first, and then when you sign that crossing agreement... And so, they were there first, and then when you sign that crossing agreement, you have to kind of wait for their crews to be ready. What we've experienced with the Union Pacific, it's about a two-year span from the time you sign the crossing agreement between, before the agreement actually, or the crossings actually repaired. We finally did get our crossing at 11th Street done by Union Pacific. They have moved the materials in for 9th Street, which is the state highway, and so, my understanding is when they bring the crews back from wherever they went, they will do the 9th Street crossing and the one just outside of Florence.
Adam, just to clarify, for the 9th Street crossing, that is an agreement between UP, Union Pacific, and CDOT, correct? That, that's not, does not involve the city in that particular instance?
It involves us whatsoever. We had hoped, one of the reasons, we're a little frustrated, because one of the reasons that our crossing improvement was delayed on 11th Street by Union Pacific supposedly, was so they could coordinate the work to have the crew do it all at the same time with the state. They did move in the materials for both sites, but they did not stick around to do the, the work at 9th Street. So, CDOT's now, and, and I don't know what their arrangement is or what their agreement looks like, but I know that CDOT, the city's eagerly waiting for that to be done as well.
Any other questions from Council? Then I'd like to entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 15, Series 2020, entitled a resolution of the city of Canyon City approving Public Highway At-Grade Crossing Improvement Agreement.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. It was seconded by Councilmember Dennehy. Is there any discussion?
I would just add that we're also authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
I'll ask for a roll call, please. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Brandon Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
The motion passes. We're now on item B, second reading and adoption by title only, ordinance 11, Series of 2020, and this is the municipal code allowing an ADU at 316 South 10th Street.
This is a second reading, we've not received any additional public comments, and staff would ask Council to approve on second reading.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve ordinance 11, Series 2020, on second reading.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I'll call for a vote, please. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Brandon Smith.
Aye.
Thank you, Council. We're now on item 10C, second reading by adoption and title only, ordinance 12, Series of 2020, and this is the rezoning of certain real property within the city of Canyon City at 501 and 503 Griffin Avenue.
Again, this is a second reading, we've not received any additional public comments, and staff would ask the Council approval on second reading.
Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that we pass ordinance number 12, Series of 2020, on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Then I will please call for a vote. Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Attorney, item number 11A makes reference to Resolution 15. Where's that at? I mean, all we're doing is authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement, but where's, I, where...
I can't answer why there isn't a resolution prepared. What I can tell you is that a resolution is a written motion, and a motion is a verbal resolution. So a motion and a resolution have exactly the same legal effect.
All right, so we're good.
That means we're adjourned.